Oh, that would do it. Sorry about that for everybody online. We're basically just showing where to find this information on our website. That we're presenting a summary today. But if you want to go into the base presentations or the original presentations. This is where you find it on our website. This November meeting of 2020 is where we get in and we talk about the policy in the area. And the 2019 USGS study and this is really, you know, the more detailed part of what we're. I want to back down and show you a couple of other things about our website. There is this section right here in the middle where we put up a notice that the USGS groundwater conditions for the whole state of Utah was recently published. And you can click on this link. And it will take you to. Application from USGS. And Chris can pipe in here too anytime if you want. And you can zoom into Spanish Valley. And it shows current groundwater conditions. You can come in and you can click on any one of these. Monitoring wells to see what the current conditions are. So this, this is a good one in the center part of the valley. It's one of the ones we had the longest record on. Back into the sixties. And you can see the seventies has a strong downward decline. Where those wet years in the eighties have brought up. And then since about the nineties, it's been a gradual decline. A little bit of an uptick right there. Twenty eighteen is the last year of record on that one. So that's a good resource if you're interested, you can look through it. And then one other kind of cool tool we have for groundwater monitoring. Kind of see what's going on. So you go to data and you go to groundwater. You go to our groundwater level trend viewer. And you can click on Moab. By the way, we're kind of unique in the southeast part of the state. Being the only area in all of the soundings part of the state of having a groundwater. Area to look at, you can see most of the groundwater areas we are monitoring are along the western and down through the south west part of the state and within the western. Well, it's kind of bad small town.
All right.
This one is kind of a cool one. It shows all the different parts of your wells. And then it shows a graph of them just right over here on the side. Depending on where you're looking, it will change. What wells it's going down. Fun one to play with. I want to also compliment the USGS. When they finished the 2019 study, there was, I think, Chris, 10 wells that were being monitored in the valley. And after the 2019 study, they doubled the number of wells up to 20.
That sounds about right. Those wells that Mark's talking about, they're part of a state-wide network. That's, it's a cooperative program with the USGS and the state of Utah. The part of natural resources to, to measure wells once per year. We do it every year in March. And it's kind of up to our discretion to find wells, put them into the network. Because we, we lose wells every now and then, things get destroyed or whatever. So it's kind of been up to, you know, there's more, there's definitely been a lot more interest in groundwater in this area over the last couple of years. So it makes sense to add, add those wells, get a better network.
So anyway, we've got a lot of information on our website that you can access and kind of go in, see what's happening. See what the most recent trends are. I'm going to stop sharing this one. And then go into our presentation and. Folks online, see the presentation. Commissioner Stark can see that. All right, so. So here's the most recent studies that have been done in the valley. The 2019 USGS study was the big comprehensive full watershed review. They gave us a lot of good updated information on what's happening. And by that estimate, we'll show some of those today about what the available supply for groundwater could be within the more Spanish. Coleman. I don't know how to say his last name. Kent Coleman and his, and his partner, I apologize, I don't like to say that last name. I didn't. They get to report to the city of Moab. Twenty eighteen, twenty twenty, there was four phases. And Moab City has shared those and they provide some information specific to things that Moab City was looking for. And then in 2020, the USGS put out a research paper that went into a little bit more detail on specific points in the 2019 study. And, and went into a greater analysis of, of some of those, those points that they made in the 2019 study. So here's some key points I want to bring out today. The 2019 study concluded that the available supply for groundwater in watershed, so from the top of the mountains of Colorado River. Is between fourteen and sixteen thousand acre feet. Now, a lot of that water makes its way to the surface as base flow into Mill Creek and Pat Creek. So if you, if you dial that number down and look at what might be available just within the valley aquivers. That goes from fourteen to sixteen thousand down to maybe forty five hundred to seventy eight hundred acre feet. Might be a little less, might be a little bit more, but. Kind of have to narrow that down into, okay, what's available down here with P C A. Through springs and wells in the valley. Of that, what is available for future development? At least from our 2020 estimate was between thirteen hundred and thirty five hundred acre feet. Now, there was no delineation between Zach Lake Canyon group up for water, central bedroom up for water, or Zach Valley fill up for water. We're going to talk about the need for some additional research, some additional study that needs to happen in the valley to answer some of these questions. The current water use reporting, so our 2021 numbers show that Moab City last year reported a use of seventeen hundred acre feet. Brand water reported use of nineteen hundred and sixteen acre feet. And the new San Juan Spanish Valley Special Service District. And San Juan County Portion Valley reported a use of sixty acre feet. So a total of the big three water users in the valley of thirty six hundred and seventy six acre feet. There's a, there's an important number that's not on here that we don't have a good idea about. That's private well use. Private well owners are not required to report their water. There's no system to pick up that data. So we don't know what the private well owners are using. So you'd have to add in whatever that use is on top of this.
Yep. Any estimate whatsoever, like if you're saying, well, 20% of that, we have no idea.
We don't. Okay. We don't, we have, you know, I would just. Wild guess about would be somewhere maybe twenty, twenty-five percent.
Okay.
Because these, these are your big water suppliers. You can see what they're using. And as we, as we did the adjudication, we went around and, and visited every water right. Over what we found, it's not very many people pump heavily from their wells. Costs a lot of money. And they usually just barely use enough water to keep. Waterline, bushes alive. So there's not, except for some of the agricultural. Most of the private well owners are. Part of this is all pumps, pumps, you know, water, well and springs.
Are they able to monitor their own use of private wells? Do they have an idea? So no one really knows, not even the owners of the wells?
Yep, that's correct. So we'd love to solve that someday if we're able to figure out how to. Fire reporting. But it's going to take a heavy lift to do that. So that's something that if the county wants to get involved, yeah, help us figure that out, we'd love to do that.
So it would involve, it probably should ask, sorry. So it would involve not only getting permission, but it would also be getting the equipment?
Yep. So you might have seen in the legislature this year, they just did a big bill and, and dedicated $250 million towards secondary metering. And that's a huge effort, but that doesn't include any of these private well. That's just secondary metering across systems, for systems across Utah. You can kind of see the scope of a lot of money to put meters on, like that. It's a big, it's a big challenge.
But we do know how many wells there are in the valley because we have well locks. Right? Yeah, okay.
And the general adjudication that we just completed. We went through and identified every water right, whether it was still in use, whether it got abandoned, whether there was on use issues. So the water right record is a clean record. Just published the northern adjudication last year, we'll be ready to publish the southern adjudication here in that, in that month or so. So that's one great thing that has, we've been able to accomplish is to clean up the water records. Everything that's out there right now on record should be a valid or right. Good questions. Okay, so some key takeaways. Is that there's just a lot of additional study that's needed. The 2019 report from the USGS was a big picture study. Now we kind of need to really drill into the details. We've identified principally three areas that need a lot more study. The first area is up around the Kent Lake area. Chris and I were just talking about that today, about how much of an influence Kent Lake has on recharge to the valley. We don't know, nobody's fully studied that out. So that would be a great area of additional research that could be done. Another area of important research would be right around the Gulf. We know that there's wonderful springs that come in there that the city is using. They have several important, yes, but wells centered right there. That's an area of a large influence of good, pristine Glen Canyon group up for water. And so how much water is coming in there? What's the limits of what we developed in there? He knows. At least studied that out. And then finally, the area down by the Matts and Wetlands along the Colorado River. We'll talk a little bit more about that further in the presentation, but there's real concerns about, okay, what happens if we develop more water up the valley? Is there going to be an impact to the Matts and Wetlands? Or, or the Colorado? So we'll get into a little bit. So we've identified these additional studies that are needed. And the first one would be to refine the estimates of available groundwater. We saw that we just gave a range of what might be available. And that is to be studied out. So is it, are we on the bottom end of the range or are we on the top end of the range? If we're closer to the top end of the range, it gives us breathing room. And if we're down around forty five hundred acre feet, that's all that's left to develop. And we're almost there. So that would be an important key point is, is refining those estimates and doing some additional study to try to narrow that range of what, what it's actually about. So another area which you need to define areas of critical groundwater recharge. We just touched on that around Kent Lake. There around the Gulf Porous. There's also the area where Mill Creek enters the valley. That might be a very critical point of recharge for those springs down on 191, like Sabal Spring, Water Crest Spring. So that's, that's an important area of additional research that needs to be done. Improving and expanding our groundwater monitoring. So that's happening, but it needs to be more. We got a call earlier this year about a well that may have, maybe having trouble with, with the available supply of the groundwater in the well. So we went out and looked at it and with the landowner and, and he said, my well has gone dry. So we're like, okay, well, let's see if we can figure out why. So we started trying to probe some of the wells around it. One of the wells we probed was if we get our water measurement probe down the well. And it looked okay. It really had changed from a reading that we had several years ago. The other wells we tried to probe, we couldn't really get our instrument down because it would get hung up on the electrical cable. So having some dedicated monitoring wells is important. So there was no monitoring well close enough that could really give us an idea of why this particular well is having trouble. So we could answer the question for them. Why are you having trouble? Did your well go dry or is there some other cause that's happening? That maybe the well collapsed, maybe rusted out, we don't know. But, but having better monitoring scattered out, there's still holes in the valley? No, Chris, if you want to touch on any of that.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, that kind of network that Mark showed at the beginning is, it's really been a sort of ad hoc network of adding wells where, where we could find them. Wells are, they're generally, well, so people aren't using very much or some of them are still pumped. But they're kind of, there wasn't really designed to the network. This is really what happened, how it's evolved over the years. And most of the wells are designed for, for pumping. So they're designed to maximize the amount of water that you can extract, not for monitoring specific areas of what the groundwater level is. Except for some of our wells in, in, in the wetlands, those were put in specifically as monitoring pumps. But there's, there's, there's a difference in the design of the well based on what, what, what the use is. So that's, I think that's kind of what, what we wish we had is, is a well that we knew exactly what formation it was finished in and it was measuring the water level pressure in that, in that formation and, and probably more than one.
Absolutely. And then the next one would be to explore possible impacts related to additional groundwater development. So right now groundwater that's moving through the valley ends up returning to the lower end of Mill Creek. Or flowing underground Colorado River through the Matts somewhere that's preserved. Going to touch on this in a little bit more detail in just a minute, but you know, as we develop our groundwater up, up, up valley, what are the potential impacts to that? We don't know, we haven't really studied that. So we, we have an agreement with Utah Geological Survey to do a study of the wetlands. And some nature conservancy and division wildlife, USGS have commissioned the study to look at potential impact to the wetlands. And they've got their first year of that study done. It's a three-year study. They are looking for additional funding to try to, does more monitoring wells out there to try and do some additional work to figure out what happens if, if some of the water that's moving through the reserve right now gets used up the valley and is no longer available.
So Utah division of geological surveys, who's looking for more money? Who's looking for the money?
Yep, UTS.
UTS?
Yep.
We're going to talk about the Brian.
Yeah, there, yeah, I've got a slide on that.
Another potential source of funding for that is the Solitary Control Forum. USGS is working on a proposal for the, the Solitary Control Forum is funded through Bureau of Revelation, but they deal with solinity issues on the Colorado River basin. And the Brian layer that on the lace, the wetlands and the river is a potential big source of solitudes that there is potential interest.
Yeah, if the county's interested and wants to participate in that, we'd love to get your involvement.
In participating in finding funds?
Yep.
I think we'd be interested in, I don't know if we could help with the funding, but we'd certainly be willing to help with finding grants or finding avenues, correct?
Why don't we, if the UTS down here in the presentation, if anyone wants to do that, thank you for looking at more information about ways that we can help support. And finally, the last thing I list is to define the relationship between the Valley Fill Off for and the Glen Canyon Group Off for. We, we know these two off first sit right on top of one another. They are connected. But that dynamic of, of interaction between those two off versus poorly understood. And so getting a better understanding of what's happening. There's mixing that's going on, but we don't know how much. Where we don't know how that, you know, how that affects everything. That's an important piece of, that's like my point of, of understanding groundwater resources.
Just in, in general, really general, the difference between those two is, is kind of the source of the water and, and the quality of the water. You can take it like the Glen Canyon group off first, like the water that comes out of the springs, the, the nice Moab City drinking water that doesn't have a lot of harvest to it. Whereas the Valley Philographers are the shallow wells drilled into the, into the sediment that fills in the valley. It's usually poor quality. It has a more, more salt in it. And not, not used to, used more for irrigation.
So you can see it's a very complex system. You got the Valley Fill Off person on top, you got Glen Canyon Group off for water. You've got all different kinds of areas of recharge that can be coming in. And you've got the mixing between the two systems. So wonderful area, but it's very complex. And there's just a lot more study that needs to be done to understand the dynamics of this system and the movement of water through it.
So, so Mark, just, just real quick, because we've talked before about irrigation, right? Ag just as a recharge, but how much do we have a general statistic on how much you lose to like evapotranspiration? Does that make sense? Like it's all not being recharged if you're watering, you know, alfalfa?
So rule of thumb is about for irrigation, about for flood irrigation, about half of the water you put on the property.
Okay, got it.
So if you don't spread the irrigation, then actually it would be more. More efficient, yeah, more evapotranspiration. For those that, the plant, the, the plants use more.
Right.
So it less makes it back into the groundwater system.
But yeah, we consider some of it recharged personally.
Yeah, if you're flood irrigating, rule of thumb is about half is making it back into the ground. You get a much more efficient, every system like sprinklers or river irrigation, not as much as making it back to the ground and so you're about the transportation.
Thanks.
So let's talk a little bit about groundwater monitoring again. If you look at Utah law, Utah law says you can use the annual groundwater recharge, the long-term annual groundwater recharge, but you can't dip into the storage. That's why we need a good number on what's available that can be used on your annual groundwater recharge. Whether it was anybody in the valley, your groundwater table elevation was quite high. Then its development began at the valley, groundwater elevations declined because now you're picking up, using it for some purpose. Once you get to that middle triangle. Once you get to that middle triangle and you've used all of your annual groundwater recharge, you've got to stop. You can't dip into the storage. If you dip into the storage, then you're mining the resource. And that's like over drawing your bank again.
It's not a good.
Not sustainable. Yep. So where are we at in this picture? Well, we're somewhere between the top blue triangle and the middle blue triangle. We think there's still a little bit of groundwater left to develop. But probably not a lot. And and then we have to figure out how to flatten those curves out so that groundwater table no longer declining, that we've reached a sustainable point. That's hard to do. Yep. It takes a lot of monitoring and years and years worth of data. And and then you throw on top of that the climate changes that we're experiencing. And it becomes a challenging process.
You know, you're trying to sort out those two, the climate effects versus the developed effects.
Are we behind the eight ball? Are we going to be able to have that figured out before?
You guys are in a much better position than other areas of Utah. Cedar City and rural enterprise, they have blown past their safety hill by a long way. So they're in the process of very painful cuts where they're they're having to cut back existing nuisance. You get back within their safety hill. So you guys are ahead of.
We just want to make sure we stay there.
So you're you're doing a good thing focusing on this issue to try and understand it, try to figure out how to make this work before you get into a position where we're mining. So if you look at some of the groundwater data, this is just a, you know, just a quick look. The top graph is the precipitation. You can see the seventies were were brown, the eighties were a huge wet, wet time. And then since the eighties, it's kind of been up and down. Look at the well that's just across from Zach's Pizza, right downtown Moab. It doesn't look like it's changed very pretty steadily. And I put the most recent reading in 2022 right at the very end. So it looks pretty good. If you look down at the middle part of the valley at White Ranch, you can see the seventies were such steep decline. And they were probably pumping center pivot. It's like it's not been built. They're probably pumping heavy from the valley up. Which would explain that that steep decline. Then we had that big recharge in the eighties. And then since the eighties, it's been a water decline. We're sitting here in 2022 at a groundwater elevation of 27.7 feet compared to where we were in 1971 at 25.4. Not much different from all we were in seventies, but certainly a decline from where we were at eighties. And then if you look at the center part of the valley, we just really don't have monitoring in the center part of the valley to give us an idea of what's happening. We do have a few monitored wells that are down there now, but there needs to be more work in the center part of the valley. There's just insufficient information to.
Well, especially when we look at development and we know that that's where our development is going to occur.
Yes.
Also, those some of the wells that have been added were added to our wells to the southern part of the valley. We've only been monitoring them for a short period of time, so it's hard to compare. Like like these wells have been monitored for for many years.
Yeah, you can see the value of this records. Oh, you'll come back to the seventies. If all you had was the last few years, it would pay a completely different pitch. So one of the things the county is doing, and I don't know if Fisher Stock wants to talk about this, is the USGS will award $1.7 million this year to cooperative agreements to support participation in the National Groundwater Monitoring Network. Grant County has been selected to receive a grant for this program. And I know you guys, Fisher Stock, have been working on this hard. I don't know, Fisher, are you, you want to say anything about this?
Um, I've talked about it during meetings a little bit. I don't have much to update, but feel free to, yeah, why don't you just talk about it, Mark?
So we're excited about this. We're very, you know, thankful that the county has taken this on because and and Chris, maybe you can explain how this interacts with your current program.
Face, it's a national program that gives grants to local governments to kind of work, it's kind of a data sharing project, the National Data Sharing Project. Because there's a lot of different groups who collect groundwater monitoring data. And it's hard to synthesize it all together. We have our website, you know, the state has their website. Some of there is some some intermingling, but it doesn't always all come together. So this is a chance to take some of the data that the county or groundwater insurers collected for the even the city or whoever has collected and enter it into a central database. And then there's in addition, once you're in the program, I think then it it opens up your to additional funding in future years where you can use some of that grant money for infrastructure, like like adding additional monitoring. So it doesn't, it doesn't fund like myself, it might folks I work with to go collect data. It kind of it funds other people in the community to get their data into a central database.
Right, so there is groundwater monitoring that's happening in the valley that's that's not readily available. And so by the county taking this step and actively being a data provider to the USGS, it's going to make more monitoring data available on USGS website. Which is great. Yeah, let's pivot for a minute and talk about surface water. So this is a area of view of the valley. We're going to look at this cross section FF down here just by Ken's lake. If you take that cross section, you can see that the the gray is the is the sandstone Lake Canyon group. And beneath the valley, it's it it's your main offer. It's your main sandstone up. It's the best water in the valley. But you do have this tiny sliver of yellow sitting on top, which is your sandy gravel. And that's your valley fill-off. So you can kind of see the comparison, the scope between the two. Your valley fill-off first fairly small compared to your Lake Canyon group offer. Couple of key findings again from the 2019 USGS report. Pat Creek plays an outsized role in recharge to the valley fill-off. And it occurs primarily from losing reaches of Pat Creek as it moves down through the valley. So what point of water is that? How much water Pat Creek is being recharged into the valley fill-off for? We don't know because there's no gauge on that creek. There's no stream gauge on.
No, are we getting one?
We are.
I'm excited that we are getting one.
We are. The the I say that the the estimate or the where where that number came from was from measuring the flow in Pat Creek. But that was kind of a a one-shot time during that study. The measurements were made in 2015, 2016, the report came out in 2019. So that since that time period, we don't know, you know, are there changes to the amount of water that's coming down Pat Creek? Since then, we're getting a seventy years now.
But this is a picture of the USGS gauge that was put on Pat Creek last fall. And it was a temporary installation. And I think it's gone now. Yeah, it's been taken out. But we've been working with various partners in the valley, including the county, on securing funding for a permanent gauge. So this is the cost estimates for that gauge. And we've got verbal commitments from Grant County, San Juan County, Moab City, groundwater, the Nature Conservancy, Living Rivers, and of course us, the state of Utah, in helping to find this game. So it looks like it's going to happen. This need to be paperwork to to Chris and get work on it.
Because it also acts as when we're, when it, when there's floods, right? So it has a couple of purposes and maybe you can outline those. It'd be good for people to know that.
Yeah, that was the reason it was put in last year as kind of a emergency use monitoring spot for flash floods. So yeah, that's that's kind of the new purpose of the gauge. Like during winter, during what we call base flow conditions. That's like when the groundwater kind of seeps into the into the stream drainage. That's data from that time of year would be used to kind of go into that recharge equation. But then during the summer, the monsoon months, it's also, it's a flood, serves as a flood warning gauge. It'd be part of our, what we call a real-time network. We have, the USGS is a national website where people can sign up for what we call Water Alerts, so you can get a text message or email message if the river comes up a certain, to a certain height. And it's, it'll probably set up as, the data is collected every fifteen minutes. And it'll probably be updated then on a fifteen minute. So you'll have roughly like a fifteen minute kind of warning time.
So we're we're thankful for the county's participation and you should see some from us shortly. And we'd love to get this up and running this summer if we can. I don't know, Chris, is that a doable?
Yeah, we can get it installed as soon as the agreements are in place. I should also, I think it'll have a precipitation monitor on it too.
So this is a good way. Now, as we talk about this in relationship to groundwater, most years you're getting the benefit of all of Pat Creek going into the groundwater. It it disappears far away down the valley and it's all recharging into the groundwater. Or some years, so good water years that a lot of water goes down Pat Creek to Colorado River. So in those years, if there's a desire to artificially recharge the offer, you'd have some water to do. And that would involve projects, artificial recharge projects. That's what they're doing in Cedar City right now. They've got some ground bits and some recharge ponds. And they're taking flows during times of the year, winter, winter specifically. Putting that into the ground to artificially recharge their system. They're doing something similar down in St. George with San Olmo Reservoir, filling the reservoir, letting it seep into the sandstone bedrock and artificially recharging the system. So could Pat Creek be used for that potentially? How much water? We don't know this this day, we'll answer that question. So talking about Mill Creek. One of the key findings is that recharge to the shallow Lake Canyon group likely occurs primarily from losing reaches of Mill Creek and possibly from Ken's Lake. Again, an important thing to study out is as things change, where are those important sources of recharge and how do you protect them? How do you protect that recharge? Continue to go where it is going currently, like for instance, the spring is down along 191. Where where are those springs to be recharged? We don't have a good idea. But we've probably heard that. And then then you could say, okay, well, let's protect that area. Let's put some protections on that recharge area to make sure that water's still being making it. Recharge to the deep Lake Canyon group offer. The USGS had an opinion out that this is likely occurring at high elevations on the LaSalle mountain range. That's that's very interesting because that would be a whole different dynamic. And 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 that's a, that's a whole big and interesting topic that that just needs more study. I don't know, Chris, you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, it's, it does get, this is where the complications come in. It's, it seems like there's, and a lot of this evidence kind of comes from some some isotopic chemical analysis that that went into the report where you could, they were actually really good about kind of pinpointing where the different sources come from. But the comp, it gets complicated when you're looking at a well that may be pumping from multiple levels. So stakes get all mixed up and then you kind of got to back backtrack to what you think that makes it. But there's definitely some springs that show this this kind of chemical signature that is much different than the other, than the other water sources. And those are some of the, some of the main water sources seem to be what we call the deep Lake Canyon offer for. This is a much older water. Recharge, this this chemical analysis could kind of tell you the what the air, the air temperature and elevation where it entered the system at. So it seems to be like the most logical explanation is that it heard at a higher elevation in the LaSalle's versus the general Lake Canyon offer for this kind of lower, lower elevation.
So identifying where that's happening.
Would that have occurred in those cells like a long time ago?
Yeah, that's the general consensus that 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 water is is quite old, like ten, ten to twenty thousand years. But it's still a part. Yeah.
It's a ongoing process.
And then I guess when, you know, this is the point I learned when I took my hydrology class back in God, I'm a bitch about, you know, if you have a wet year up in the mountains and then you see your water levels rise in the valley, it doesn't mean that all that water is flushing the system. It's like it's pressure, right? So that you have more more water pressure up here kind of raises. It it affects what's hap, what the water pressure is in the valley. And that's really what we're measuring, what we're measuring the groundwater tables, is the amount of water pressure.
This slide, this kind of shows, we circled some of those areas we've just talked about. Potential impacts, this slide here relates to one of those areas that we're trying to get some additional stuff, information on is down here in the end of the valley where it hits the Colorado River. There is a layer of brine. So the Glencan group offer, sandstone bedrock offer, Peters Out, right around Mill Creek. And then you're sitting right on top of Paradox formations. And that's full of salts. So the interface with water, freshwater, Paradox formation creates a heavy brine. And that's sitting down there under the main part of Moab. And that's what what happens if we would throw more freshwater. That's just that what is that brine getting, is it just a, is it gonna put more brine into the Colorado River? Is it gonna kill vegetation in the wetlands? Is it gonna move up into the valley? Or is it just gonna sit there and not do anything? So that's the concern and that's why we're working to try to understand.
Just an example of the Parrot, the Paradox Valley, backside of LaSalle's. The that, it's the same brine layer. It intersects the Dolores River and it puts a large amount of salt into into the Dolores River there. There's a big extraction project to try to pump it out. It's kind of during the end of its lifetime, but that's the kind of thing that we're worried about.
So that red hashed area is the area where that that brine is located. That Paradox formation. So this is from the UGS, one of their slides are showing the various monitoring points down in the in the wetlands. And some of these are good, some of them have been destroyed, some of them are not useful. So one of the, one of the key things in monitoring the health of the wetlands is having good monitoring wells. So it's going to have to be some additional wells put in and some additional monitoring to not only have the freshwater And some additional monitoring to, not only of the freshwater layer, because all of these principally are geared towards monitoring the freshwater layer. And a lot of many of them are geared towards monitoring the brine. Six of them are drilled into the brine. They're trying to measure the level of brine.
Right.
So we, we not only want to know the layer, what's happening to the freshwater layer, we want to know what's happening to the brine layer. So that's, that's one of the reasons we're trying to speculate serial. Carefully is to identify, okay, what's gonna happen to that layer of brine underneath the freshwater? If more groundwater is drawn up that side.
One of, one of the big findings from the 2019 USGS report was that there seemed to be much less freshwater moving through this area and discharging to the Colorado River that previously thought, the last study done was in the seventies. And, you know, we have some much better refined techniques to kind of make those estimates. So it seems like there's not a lot of freshwater that's discharging to the Colorado. It also doesn't seem to be much brine that's discharging to the Colorado River. We can't really pick it up if you measure the slum upstream and downstream of wetlands, but yeah, still a concern.
And now it's the big, you remember we were looking at, I guess, to the 2019 study, that nineteen seventy-one study had estimated maybe fourteen thousand feet of valuable recharge to the mountain. And the majority of it was estimated as flowing underground to the Colorado River. I think it was eight thousand feet. And that had estimated from eight thousand feet down to a thousand feet. So that was the big difference. So we didn't even touch on Colorado River issues. We're out of time. So we're gonna have to talk about Colorado River issues another time, but those are just as important as what's happening. What happened on the Colorado River, looks to that. You guys are in a wonderful position in having a nice big river.
For so many reasons.
Communities, including where I live, that would love to have your problem of having this water conservator. So not much use is made of the Colorado River.
Okay, I think the recreation.
Recreation is first of all. But as far as actually diversion of the river, you work some other units. There's not a lot of that in Utah.
In Utah, yeah. Yes, so the goal for our community is we're going to try to have Mark come quarterly. It's great that you're already, you have the next topic in order. And do these presentations, and I asked Gabriel if, if it was possible to kind of delineate his presentation and put it on the county website, which would be great. It'd be great if the TI would share it, et cetera, and so on, to just get that information out as much as we can to the community. You have five minutes. Are there questions from anybody in that? Is there any questions?
Would you share the presentation with us?
Sure. Yeah.
Cause I started trying to take notes.
There, one, one thing to add about that, the area down in the floor end of the aquifer system. We do have a, a gauge down there that was put in a couple of years ago to Mark mentioned that that, that area, kind of lower Mill Creek areas where a lot of valuable aquifer discharge, it comes out of the groundwater and back up into Mill Creek. During the summer months, most of that water gets, it's vapor transpiration, it gets used up by, by the mineral areas and by the, by the vegetation there. But in the winter, when the trees aren't using that water, it comes out to the surface and flows down to the Colorado River. That was the main purpose. That was, you know, one, getting to another data point, that was a big one to, to get that gauge installed, so we can keep track of that. It's, it's kind of a, a gauge to help us keep track of what, what, how much water is coming out of the valley flow. As funded similarly to the, the way the Patrick engaged.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. Any other, any other questions?
No, I just can't thank you enough. Marcus, we make him come down here all the time.
Mark's great.
Like he's down here about once a week. He's gonna be here till Thursday. Yeah, maybe more than once a week.
And we're, we're happy to share this information. It's a complex problem. It needs a lot of discussion. It's a lot of study. It's a lot of work, and it makes a lot of money devoted to work to study these things. Which kind of do with the
Right, yeah.
Everything we find, we get another question.
Thank you so much, Mark and Chris. All right, I'll close the community information session.
Stand up while we have to.
Thank you, Chris.
Yes.
All right, I will open the meeting of the Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District. It is April nineteenth. Present, we have Commissioners Josie Kovach, Mary McGinn, Trish Hedin, and Jacques Hadler in person. And virtually, we have Commissioner Stock. We also have Clerk Auditor Kate Waitek, County Administrator Mallory Nassau, Assistant Associate Administrator Quinn Hall, and we have County Attorney Christina Sloan. We'll open with citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard for the Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District? On Zoom. It doesn't look like it, so we will move to the approval of minutes from the March fifteenth meeting. Entertaining a motion to approve the minutes from the March fifteenth.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Thompson Springs Fire District meeting.
Thanks. Have a motion by Commissioner McGinn. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion on the minutes? I'll call for a vote. All in favor of approving the motion, raise your hand, say aye.
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 Passes five, nothing. Ratification of payments of bills, and I think those amounts are on here. I would entertain a motion for the ratification of payments of bills. Actually, I just found them a few. The, I entertain a motion for the ratification of the payment of bills, total bills in the amount of one thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars and thirty cents. Total payroll in the amount of one thousand six hundred forty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents. Combined bills and payroll in the amount of three thousand five hundred twenty-nine dollars and eighteen cents.
I'll make a motion to ratify, to ratify the bills as stated.
Thank you.
Second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the bills? And then I'll call for a vote. All in favor of the motion, raise your hand, say aye.
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 Passes five, nothing. We are up to the fire chief's report, and it looks like we have Chief Markham with us on Zoom. Do you have anything to report, Mark?
Uh, yeah, I do. Greetings. So beginning with the most recent incident on April sixteenth, approximately one o'clock in the morning, we got paged to a vehicle fire way out at the mile marker two fourteen, which is the east Cisco exit of I seventy. Arrived to find a, a full-size truck fully engulfed, and it got into some brush too. So it is myself and my new rookie out there, and the training paid off for him. He did real well. So that was, we lost the truck, but we were able to keep the brush fire from spreading. As far as equipment goes, everything's functional, working, ready to go. Training, we've been ongoing training. We, we get together about six times a month. Our last training was actually, we went over fire saws, practiced with our saws. And also, we got a grant for some new scene lighting, and that actually came in real handy on this vehicle fire. Well, it's portable lighting that you can set up in about twenty seconds, and that made everything safer. We were able to see our footing better in the middle of the night and whatnot, so it was a good deal. As far as business goes, I was up table, up, I was able to update the state fire rate agreement. We, someone donated a, agency donated a three thousand dollar portable water tank to us, which is used mainly for wildfire. It'll come easy on structure fire too. We can take it wherever we need to set it up, and fire engines and also helicopters can dip out of that. So that'll be a real handy this year with, especially without cutting wildland fire season. I did attend the Grand County Emergency Task Force meeting on the fifth. For the twenty-second year in a row, I got a wildland red carded, which basically just means it's a national certification, which enables me to legally, I guess, fight wildfires and also get reimbursed from the state for, for certain fires that we go on. And then because of the critical fire weather conditions, I have had some burn requests, prescribed burn requests out in Thompson, but I've had to deny those because of the, the winds, the low relative humidity and the, and the higher temperatures, and it's just super dry out there. And actually, today is a red flag warning, and it looks like the rest of the next couple of days is gonna be real dangerous too. So I just had to shut those down to, for safety. And that's all I have.
All right, awesome. Thank you so much for your great work up there, Mark. Looks like we don't have any new or old business on the agenda. Is there any considerations anyone would like to bring up? Seeing none, it looks like we don't have a closed session either. So if there's nothing else, I will adjourn the April nineteenth Thompson, Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District regular meeting. Thank you.
It's good seeing you, chief.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, yeah, thanks, Mark. All right, it is now four oh nine, and I will call to order the regular Grand County Commission meeting, April nineteenth. We have the same folks that were at the Thompson meeting. It looks like we haven't been joined by any other commissioners. So we will start the meeting out with a pledge of allegiance. Thanks, Trish.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're up to citizens to be heard. I don't see anyone in the chambers. Do we have any citizens to be heard on Zoom? We will also have a citizens to be heard session at right around six o'clock in the meeting as well. Doesn't look like we have any citizens to be heard today. So we'll move ahead to the, doesn't look like we have any department or agency reports. So we're at the approval of minutes from the April five regular commission meeting. I have a motion to approve the minutes from April five.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April fifth, two thousand and twenty-two Grand County Commission regular meeting.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion regarding the minutes from April fifth? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Passes five, zero. We're on to the ratification of the payment of bills, the total bills in the amount of one million, one hundred seventeen thousand dollars, six hundred and ninety, or six hundred ninety-seven dollars and twenty-four cents. Total payroll in the amount of three hundred and fifty-two thousand, one hundred fifty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents. Total bills and payroll in the amount of one million, four hundred sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred fifty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents. Total bills and payroll and the amount of one million, four hundred sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred fifty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to ratify the bills as stated.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Do we have a discussion concerning the ratification of payment of bills? Looks like not. I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes five, nothing. We are on to Commission Member disclosures. Does any Commissioner present have anything they need to disclose concerning today's meeting?
I do have a disclosure. I will be recusing myself from item M, the Travel Council Advisory Board appointment, since I'm actively employed by the nominee.
All right, thank you, Jess. Do we have any other disclosures? Great. We are up to General Commission reports and future considerations, and I'll start with Sarah on Zoom.
Thank you. Hello, everybody.
Just one second, Sarah. It looks like we have been joined by Commissioner Clapper. Just wanted to note that. Thanks. Yes, proceed.
Um, let's see. Oh, I attended the MOAB Area Housing Task Force meeting for Mary, and we kind of just looked at some of the housing plan updates and ratified a, a letter in support for the housing authority, one of the housing authorities' affordable housing projects. And I also attended a meeting about the space up at the, where, where the mosquito abatement district and the weeds department both share space up at the Canyonlands Recycling Center facility. And we kind of walked around the site and looked at options for fixing some of the issues and solving some parking space problems. So, there's the potential in the future that, that building needs some work, and it needs a new roof. And there's some issues with just not having privacy in the office, that kind of thing. And so, we've asked the department heads to come together with and formulate some kind of plan to bring forward to the commission to solve some of those bigger structural problems, but it will probably be capital improvements that hopefully may get onto the budget for next year. There's a chance that they might come to us with the need to update their pesticide shed with a budget amendment this year, but we'll see. And that is all.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. Evan, are you ready with the report yet? Are you able to hear us, Commissioner Clapper?
Yeah, sorry, I was unmuting. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you just fine. Thanks.
Great, thanks. Yeah, I had a meeting with Cemetery District. Things are going well there. There was talks about some upgrades to the grounds out at Sunset Memorial Gardens. And that was about it for that meeting. I was unable to locate the healthcare district. I was looking for them at the hospital, and they were in fact meeting at Grand Center. So, we caught up over emails on that one, but nothing much to report on that new assignment there. And then with EMS, we are, we just distributed the, the director's evaluation. So, board members are working on that, and that's going to kind of be what the board is focusing on for the next month. And I believe that is all I got, unless anyone has any questions for me.
All right, yeah, thank you, Evan. Josie, first report as a Commissioner. Welcome.
Yeah, no committee assignments yet, but I did attend the charging forward presentation that was hosted by Department of Transportation and Utah Clean Cities, and I believe everybody has the document, what's the word that I'm looking for? Anyways, the Charging Forward Guide, which I found to be very helpful, the playbook, something like that, something like playbook. It was a good, so the first half is a really good primer on a lot that I didn't even know about electric vehicle charging, like the difference between levels one, two, and three charging stations, like the basics. And then the second half has a robust amount of information about like funding sources and other kinds of resources as a county, moving forward on any initiatives around having a more robust electric vehicle infrastructure. So, I mean, some takeaways, there's definitely both a nationwide initiative to connect rural communities into kind of a charging station grid, if you will, and there's also an Intermountain West sort of coalition that's doing the same thing, which I was unaware of. That is also hoping to create like signage that's similar to scenic byways, things of that nature, to start kind of moving us in that direction. So, synergy definitely at the forefront locally with all of this. And I know both Jacques and Sarah were also there, so they might have other takeaways. But it's definitely good to start thinking about anticipating rather than just meeting current needs for electric vehicles. That's all.
Yeah, thanks, Josie. Mary?
Yes, on the seventeenth of March, I attended the Canyonlands Country Partnership, and Amber and Jason Johnson, Amber is a member of the Monastelo BLM staff, and Jason is worked for Forest Fire and State Land in Grand County, are moving to the island of, let's see if I can pronounce it right, Palau, P-A-L-A-U.
Bula?
Palau, Palau, anyway, they're excited and saddened by it, and they're leaving. They're, we will, they will be missed. They have been excellent staff for both the BLM and for Forest Fire and State Lands. The Sovereign Lands hired two more employees to help with the management of the Daly and Labyrinth Canyon, which we're very happy to hear that that was able to be funded. The Utah State Raptor State Park will begin charging fees this month, maybe as soon as next week. Wow. UDOT will be adding more passing lanes between Crescent Junction and MOAB this summer. Well, so this is good news, good news. The Division of Wildlife, we're very excited about the Wolverine. I think it may be even national news. And so, that was, that was fun to hear about. And trail cameras for hunting are banned because the cameras violate the Fair Chase Act. Mostly for bear, I believe.
Yeah, for everything. You can still have trail cameras, but it's up to a certain date, and then if you have them beyond that, right, it's considered you're using for hunting. So, it's for everything.
It's for everything. It's for everything. That's what I thought, but then I started, did I, did I write that down correctly when I was taking notes? So, and the Forest Service is subscribed, fires are going on right now, and they're doing improvement to Glacier Pass and different areas, and working on the mitigation from the fire last summer. The National Park Service are dealing with rural overpopulation in Horseshoe Canyon, and thus far, the timed entry system is going very well. You know, a few hiccups, but the people in the, the people who get in the park and are leaving are giving rave reviews. They're finding it much more pleasant experience. There's been a few unhappy people who didn't have reservations, but they have, were able to get them. And they've discovered that, like anybody that's gone camping in our forests and such, you have all these campsites that are reserved, and nobody shows up. The same issue is happening with the timed entry, so they're going to start releasing more to be picked up daily. So, I'll keep you posted on that. I went to a Travel Council meeting, and most of the stuff that we talked about in Travel Council will be discussed later on. But we did have a very interesting presentation from the Loves, gave us a presentation. They're doing a lot of creative messaging on the Arches Reservation System that has been very helpful. And as the media ramped up, they have served nearly one point seven million people, and people have clicked on to the interest. All targeted audiences who are actively researching. We have reached, they have reached six hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-one travels, which is an engagement of one point twelve percent, which is, and the benchmark is only one percent, so that's really good. Thirty-eight percent of the people that are traveling saying, say the gas prices will unpack their travel plans in the next six months. The top five reasons that people travel are, one, they travel to visit people they love. Two, to follow by seeing new places. Three, for experiencing nature. Four, get away from crowds, and the fifth one was to travel to going to have it. Okay, so you got the five, top four. I must not have written the fifth one. So, and the Solid Waste Special Service District has purchased a new building, which is going to be enabled customers. You will like it a lot because you will be able to be one shop. You can go there and get all your information on transfer station and, and, you know, all the other stuff that you are dealing with, with solid waste. They're in the process of purchasing a new double-wide for office, meeting places, and training, and it will be located at the transfer station. This is a great improvement because there is presently, there no play, there isn't anywhere place to meet for our board meetings, and we've had to go to boardrooms in motels in the past, so this will allow us to meet on, on grounds. They had an employee appreciation party on the fifteenth at the Bowling Alley, and it was a great success. And I was really excited about because working in the solid waste management industry is very difficult, very difficult, hard work. And I encourage everyone here and everyone online to give your thanks to your solid waste workers when they're picking up your garbage and such, because it's hard, hard work. When the winds, just as a heads up, when the winds get up to in the teens and the twenties, you can expect the MOAB landfill to close. It's too dangerous for many reasons. I visit, I went to the update of the general plan, and I'll just go over the dates. On April twenty-fifth, we're going to have a workshop. On the twenty-seventh, there's neighborhood planning is beginning in April. On the third of March, the adoption, hopefully we'll adopt the plan. And on the eleventh, we will begin more neighborhood-specific planning.
I think you meant the third of May, right?
Third of May. Oh, yeah, third of May, and it says it right there. Nice. And for future consideration, I, I think it would be good for us to look at the bills that Senator Lee is proposing for affordable housing. Read it and look and see if that's something we want to support. And the bill that's being proposed by a senator from, or a representative from Idaho that is on Gateway Cities. And so, that's for a future consideration. I think it'd be nice to do something and combine, not just with us, but other counties. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mary. Trish?
Okay, so I just have a couple of quick things. I went to the Planning Commission. We basically discussed, we opened public comment on the general plan. I went to, up to Vernal to the Bookcliff's Working Group, and that's with the Division of Wildlife, and it might not seem attached, but I think it, it is really relevant to us in the sense that wildlife in the Bookcliffs is struggling. I think that has a lot to do with these propositions. We've talked, talked about the Bookcliffs Highway. So, elk populations are totally stagnant. Deer populations are declining. They think, and I think this is interesting, you guys are like, oh, let's not talk about wildlife, but elk is, they're pretty interesting. So, they did a tooth study on cows that were harvested, and the average age of the cow harvested up there was twelve point two years old. One of the oldest cows they killed was twenty-three. So, they're just not reproducing, right? So, they've just, they're, it's really interesting. But I think one of the other really big takeaways was last year, the fawn survival rate last year was eight percent. A lot of the fawns that died up there, they, they were doing all these collared studies so they can capture these fawns, collar them, and right away when they're dead, figure out what's killing them. And a lot of the fawns that died last year was heat exhaustion. So, that's really disturbing.
Does that mean they're not getting enough water?
Water's a limiting factor up there, but they said literally their bellies were full, and they just dropped over dead. So, that's really disturbing. The other big issue, and you just mentioned it, is not only, I don't want to call them wild horses, so feral, stray, whatever you want to call them, the horses up there are a huge issue. They counted, they flew and counted last year, and, and I just call it a polygon from basically the Green River across the top of the divide over to the Colorado border. They counted like four hundred and sixty horses. It was right in that realm, and that's just what they counted. And then the other issue up there are wild cows. So, cows that, and specifically in the roadless area, that are unbranded because they have gone wild, they're now reproducing. And so, you've got these cows, there's not supposed to be any cattle in little, in the roadless area. They bought up those allotments a long time ago, and so, there's, they think there's a couple hundred wild cows roaming too. So, anyway, it's pretty interesting, and so, obviously, what'd you say?
Can ranchers just go in and claim cows?
Yes. So, they're just, they want us as a county to kind of acknowledge that, and feasibly, we may have to write a letter of support when they go to talk about gathering wild cows, right? As we get later on, but, but those two populations have a huge impact on wildlife, right? And the amount of forage that they're taking away from wildlife. So, I thought that was interesting. I went to the local homeless council, and as always, the numbers are quite discouraging. Our current number is a hundred and forty-six individuals seeking homeless services. Eighty-eight of those individuals were literally homeless, and out of those eighty-eight, ninety-one percent were situational. So, not chronic, chronically homeless, but situational, as we know, there's been endless amounts of evictions that have led to that situational homelessness. So, as always, that number is really discouraging and escalating. That's it.
All right, thanks, Trish. Um, I just noticed Commissioner Walker joined us. Do you want to, are you, do you want to report, Kevin, or I can go if you still need time to get yourself together?
Yeah.
Sure, yeah, I'll do mine. So, on the seventh, I attended the same meeting as Josie and Sarah concerning the electric vehicles, and I think Josie summed it up very well. I also had a little bit of takeaway in that there's a lot of opportunity for businesses to, to get involved with this and to, to develop like small-scale electric charging stations, that it's good for business. I think that's great, and there's, there's money out there and potentially people to work with. So, if anyone has a business, I think it's a boon to have a charging station at your business. People can charge their cars and spend more time inside buying stuff or doing business. On the twelfth, I attended a Trail Mix meeting. It was the first Trail Mix meeting out that was live for two years, which was great. We had a very good turnout. There was quite a few people from the city that showed up too, which is unusual, so I want to thank them. There was some discussion about the Responsible Recreation and Trail Ambassador programs, and there was an action item that passed to approve a checklist to streamline approval of any future trail proposals. So, a real kind of checklist to go through that, that could save a lot of time and energy for anybody who, who would like to propose a new non-motorized trail. On the twelfth, I also attended the Thompson Springs Special Service District, the Water Board there, and we voted to approve or to send a commission recommendation to add Ron Penne to the board. We'll come to that in our meeting later. And also hired Eric Thane to be the Assistant Water Manager. On the thirteenth, I attended the Economic Diversification Meeting, which did not attain a quorum. So, a few of us just had a bit of a discussion about the direction of economic diversification, just a kind of informal thing. On, last Thursday, I attended the Motorized Trail Committee Meeting. On, last Thursday, I attended the motorized trail committee meeting along with a few other folks in the county. And a big part of the discussion was with the responsible recreation folk. Anna, and we discussed bringing that sort of messaging to the motorized recreators in the motorized community. And I think that's a great, that's a great discussion and a great place to take the responsible recreation messaging. That's it for my week, or a couple of weeks. You, you ready to go, Kevin?
Sure. Um, let's see, looking at my calendar for the past few weeks, I went to a transportation special service district meeting. They're getting geared up to, to help fund Jackson Street Phase Two. Was that, I attended as a substitute for Mary, an economic development advisor board meeting. I think we'll be hearing more about some of those projects on our agenda. I attended a joint, the first San Juan County, Grand County Moab City meeting where we talk about you know, issues that cross borders and affect the whole Big Valley. So hoping that that will evolve into something useful for helping coordinate our planning. Various discussions about the land trade that's taking up some time. Also about public lands proposal, which hopefully will be, I'm hoping will be a workshop for us in two weeks to make some progress on that. And I feel like I'm leaving one out, but anyway.
Yeah. Thank you, Kevin. Onto elected official reports. Start with you, Gabe. Anything to report from the Kirk's office?
I'm certified as our records officer now and just starting the sort of a pre pre-audit engagements that started a little personally this week.
Awesome. Thanks, Gabe. Attorney Sloan, do you have anything you'd like to report at this time? Is Christina with us, actually? Okay. Right, right. We will move on to the administrator report. Mallory?
Okay. First, I will announce some exciting news, which is that we have hired Alicia Oliver as our commission coordinator. And we were able to talk her over to the dark side, if you will, from the Graham Center. So I am, I know that Alicia will be the perfect fit to get our office fully staffed and move towards some of our long-term goals. Next, I told the city I would share something for them. And it's probably best if I just read it, so I don't botch it. So a contractor for the city will be removing the existing parking stripping and re-stripping in the center of the street on the east side of the county building next week at April twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth or thereabouts. This is being set up as a demonstration area for the dispersed parking plan that's being funded through the UDOT hotspot funding. Parking on that side of the building will be unavailable while work is done. Once the stripping work is completed, the center parking slots will be available for use. And then they also shared a nice flyer.
We're a little confused. It's the east side of the.
I'm terrible with directions, but I have a map. Quinn can interpret for me. Well, while she does that, I can share with you, they have a few plan information slash demonstrations scheduled. And on May fourth, they will have two in person. The first one be two hundred north and one hundred north from ten AM to noon. And the second will be Center Street, one hundred south, one hundred east from one o'clock to three PM. And if you aren't able to make that, they will have one on May fifth at nine AM that will be virtual. And they have a website and also ask if possible that you all register for the May fifth. And I imagine just getting back to them about May fourth might help if they're planning anything additional. So I can send these flyers out and go from there. I think that's not all that I have, actually. So somebody already stated this, I believe, but there will be a joint workshop on Monday, the twenty-fifth with the planning commission. And that will be hybrid at two thirty PM. Let's see, I am forgetting something, but that's okay. That's all I have right now.
All right. Thank you, Mallory. If you remember, you can come back to you. Quinn? The west side. That makes more sense.
That makes a lot more sense.
All right. Did you have anything else to report, Quinn, or?
No, that's my only report.
All right. Also, I, I very much apologize. I didn't mention that Chris Barrett, our strategic development director, was with us earlier. Chris, do you have anything you'd like to report on?
Uh, yeah, thanks. So Bill Jackson and I went up to CIB meeting for the Jackson Street Phase Two application that we turned in. And they offered us a four hundred and forty-seven thousand dollar grant and a nine hundred and nine thousand dollar one percent interest loan for the Jackson Street Phase Two project. So that's definitely going to help get that project done and also leave enough funds for our NRCS project on Pat Creek as well. So that's all good news. And yeah, last week I got COVID. Wasn't too bad, but you know, I avoided it for quite a while. But was sick last week. But before that, yeah, we had a good success in the CIB meeting there.
Awesome. That's great news, Chris. Thanks. And I hope you're recovering.
Getting there. Thank you.
I forgot something. I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. Mary had something she wanted to add.
John Curtis, Representative John Curtis will be in town on Wednesday, the fourth. He wants to meet with the plan, you know, the people that are working on the public plans. I think I already sent you that. And he's having a town hall meeting at seven thirty in the evening.
On the, seven thirty in the evening on the fourth. And that'll be at Star Hall? Excellent. Thank you, Mary. Great. All right. It looks like we're on to our, we have no presentations today. So we're on to our general business action items, discussion and consideration of. Item B, approving small tourism business marketing grant program pilot. You're up, Ben, Alter Economic Development Specialist.
So I have the proposals that I sent to you all in front of me, and I know they're in the packet. Would it be helpful if they were also on the screen? Especially if anyone has changes or edits that want to be considered. I'm glad to put up the documents so everyone can see it on the screens.
Would anyone prefer that? I, I read through them. I feel pretty comfortable. Kevin, you think that'd be?
Might be nice for the audience if we're going to talk about them in detail.
Right. Good point.
Happy to. Okay. Well, thank you all so much for taking the time. So today for consideration is what we're calling the Small Tourism Business Marketing Grant Program, which would be a pilot. The brief background on this is that later we'll be considering the diversification grant, which is a much larger spend proposed, but we are aiming to create two programs that balance out both considerations for the economy. That is expansion of diversified businesses, but also prioritizing businesses that are already here and with us, specifically within the tourism sector. And so our goal is to take about fifty-five thousand dollars and create around eleven grants of five thousand dollars to give to small tourism-related businesses or nonprofits in the community so that they can market their services to visitors. We have a few stipulations with this grant that I think are important to consider with the commission today. One is that the marketing funds will be used only for folks who are in Moab already. So we're not looking to advertise to folks in Chicago or LA. We want to advertise to people who are already here. And something that I flagged for review with the commission is we would love to get input on the language we've included in the criteria section about noise pollution and other public concerns that could be associated with promoting services. We want to leave the grant flexible enough that we get some great proposals and support small businesses. But we also want to make sure that we're prioritizing at the same time considerations by the community. So I don't want to read every section. I'm glad to take questions and comments.
Any questions or comments for Ben?
I'm excited about this. I think giving back to the local community is a really good thing, you know, that, you know, I'm excited about.
Yeah, I read through it. I think it looks great, Ben.
Thank you. And I do have your note included in here about, let's see, it was about the eligibility. I believe you said something about, let's see, like to see owners from either grant or northern San Juan County included. So I think we tried to cover that in the first bullet here with Spanish Valley region of San Juan County. But if we think that could be more clear, language could be changed from that. I'm glad to make an amendment.
No, I, yeah, I, yeah, sorry.
No.
Yeah, I think I would maybe perceived it that the owners could be out of the valley, right? Yeah, so I just want to keep it local.
Great. But also, when you say small businesses, I know it's in the packet. If you could clarify, like, what size businesses, like number of employees? Absolutely. So the definition that we're using is small and locally owned. So locally owned, we just went over. And for small, we're saying ten full-time employees. Full-time is equivalent to thirty-five hours, but we're also leaving flexibility. A lot of businesses don't operate that way. So have, if you have, say, twenty employees that operate at seventeen point five hours during a pay period, then we would also consider those basically ten employees at full-time, thirty-five hours or equivalent.
Would that be, that's probably averaged over the year. For example, a lot of businesses expand a lot during the season and contract considerably.
Exactly. Right. Yes. And I, I think that we could definitely, once we start receiving some applications, we might want to. Or actually, before we receive some application, just clarify that language a little more so businesses understand. Because of course, there's fluctuation throughout the year. We want to be accommodating for that.
Excellent. Yeah. Yeah, I know. I think it's a, I think it's a great program too. And someone who's engaged in business in town. I think that's, it's a really nice opportunity to give back, help attract people that are already here to, to your business.
Thank you. We've got some great feedback from the public and from our governing bodies. So you all have been part of this at some point or other.
Yeah, I also appreciate how well you guys have put it out there and vetted it in the community.
Yeah, I think the criteria is great. And kind of to your specific question about like quality of life and noise pollution. I think it's adequately addressed, but you know, it doesn't dominate at the expense of anything else. So.
Great. Thank you. And I know that that was chief of mind, but there are also other quality of life concerns. So if commissioners today or other points, think of those. This is not the last document on the criteria for this grant. We'll definitely be updating things as we build things like an FAQ list and an application portal. So if you think of other things we want to flag for applicants, please let us know.
I'm just, I mean, sorry to complicate things at the last minute here, but since we tend to prefer businesses that operate, you know, that offer year-round jobs. It seems like the criteria, if you are averaging over the year, is in some ways penalizing businesses that have year-round employees. In other words, they could be, have twice as many employees if they operated only six months of the year. So are we sure that we want to average it over a year as opposed to just take the peak or?
I have a comment about that. I think that we're targeting businesses that are attracting tourists. So obviously they're tourist-based businesses. So I think the businesses that these would benefit are, are, are really the type of businesses that will expand and contract seasonally. And they're, and, and there's some great local businesses that engage in those sort of things, outfitters, et cetera. I would, I'd prefer not to see those businesses penalized for operating seasonally, I guess.
Okay. But I guess, you know, once, you know, if we assume for the moment that all businesses are seasonal, you know, then we've got some cutoff for about, you know, which, which of those businesses are too large to get the grant. And then we realize that maybe some tourism businesses are closer to year-round. And how, you know, do they get, how, how do we put those two different thresholds for how big is too large? So to me, it doesn't feel like penalizing the seasonal businesses, which after all are the, the common case, but.
I agree with what you're saying. I think maybe a consideration for our office would be to be a little more specific with this language and come up with some more specific indicator. Employees, ten full-time employees or equivalent for X amount of months during the year or something like that. I can understand what you're saying. And I, I also, now that you've raised that, I kind of worry that that could leave some people out as well. Because when things fluctuate, you could have eleven employees. And then most of the year, that's not the case for something like that. I don't know if this is something that we can move forward with and address that later, but I would like to.
Yeah, I, I don't want to slow things down and, but um, you know, something to think about, maybe, you know, in the next iteration of this or something like that.
Maybe you want to workshop that, yeah.
Is it in the criteria for measuring, you know, like how many points you get?
How many employees determining your weight? Not necessarily. It's just a threshold.
I was just wondering if that was some way we could do it that would help us when we're judging the applications to say, you know, state it somewhere that ten, ten employees year-round. Or ten employees. And if it's ten employees year-round, there's a higher percent when you're judging the criteria, the application as opposed to ones that fluctuate the whole lot.
Or maybe a criteria point is just like full-time year-round employment and that has a certain amount of points that could be gotten compared to other benefits.
Criteria for the evaluation.
Excellent. Thank you.
So yeah, I mean, just again, to introduce another, so independent of what I said earlier, the way it's written now, and there is this hard cutoff of, of ten. Like if you've got eleven, you know, you're just completely not eligible. I, I think some kind of soft cutoff, I mean, maybe this is what Mary was saying, where you just start to lose points or maybe you, you gain points if you're.
Yeah.
I don't know. I, I would call it maybe a negative score as you get larger so that people don't fall off a cliff if they hire one more person. But it's just that, you know, we wait there a little.
Something that'll, that occurs to me as far as businesses that operate seasonally is sometimes during the season, we don't, these businesses don't need to attract anyone else. They don't need any more money to attract people. But we are looking to, or these businesses are looking to attract people in the off-season. So this type of marketing thing could help business evolve a little bit from being a seasonal-only business to a business that operates more year-round and is able to employ people on a more year-round basis as well.
Absolutely. Yeah, we've, we've definitely thought of that. Some, you know, again, larger businesses are often able to take advantage of the fact that the shoulder season is shrinking and shrinking. And so if this grant can help those other businesses get that leg up, then that would be the intended purpose.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's great. I want to make sure that Commissioners Clapper and Stock are able to speak to this if they, if they'd like to online.
I would just echo the sentiment of prioritizing the small numbers rather than it being a hard eligibility line.
Thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, it all looks good. I like it. And I'm glad to see it moving forward and staying locally.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other discussion or questions for Ben?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Great. Thank you, Mary.
I move to approve the Small Tourist Business Marketing Grant Program Pilot for implement, implementation.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Second by, motion by Commissioner McGann, second by Commissioner Walker. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, raise your hand or say aye. Looks like it passes seven, nothing. Thank you. Yeah, thanks, Ben. Might as well keep your seat there. Next item. Yeah, thanks, Ben. Might as well keep your seat there. Next item, C, approving Local Economic Diversification Grant Program Pilot. And Alter Economic Development Specialist.
Wonderful. Thank you all so much. So again, with the grant we just talked about, as with this grant, this has received significant public input. There we are. Received significant public input through workshops as well as a workshop with the commission. So thank you all again for helping us shape this. This is a larger spend with about five hundred thousand dollars allocated to it. And our goal is to disperse around twenty grants, reaching up to the five thousand dollar threshold. And then about seven grants between five thousand up to one hundred thousand dollars. The goal of this grant is to support what we are considering diversified organizations, being businesses or nonprofits. In their efforts to either expand their services, expand their ability to hire and retain employees or offer those employees more competitive wages, more benefits, something that they can do to invest back in their workforce or their product and help their business along. So again, I know everyone has this, and I think a special consideration that we would like attention on is our definition of economic diversification. This is something that has been a mandate for our office since I arrived. And while we understand the general tenets of it, we don't have a great definition. So we decided to use this grant process to also tackle that. So any workshop on either the language included in the diversification statement as well as anything within the grant program itself is appreciated.
All right, thank you, Ben. Any questions from Commissioners for Ben? Discussion.
Once again, exciting. I'll make a motion. I move to approve the Economic Diversification Grant Program Pilot for implementation.
Thank you, Mary. I have a motion by Commissioner McGann. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Josie. Motion on the table, discussion.
Um, I just had a really quick question for Ben. I know both of these are a little bit contingent on hiring a small business development center staff. I wonder if you could just give an update on that process?
Yes, I can provide a brief update. And August would be a better person to go to that. But the gist of it is, we are either near executing an MOU with USU or it exists. And the job just needs to be posted, but we are very close to that. Once, so a, a bit of context is Megan McFaul, who is in the USU SBDC office in Blending. Serves San Juan County. She is wonderful and has been basically serving Grand County as well in the absence of having her own officer. Megan will be the one who will train the new SBDC officer in our region. And we are told that that will be about a three-month process. So even if we get one hired tomorrow, it's not assured that this person will be able to vet the applications and provide the resources to applicants that we want. That being said, since we have someone who's very competent in serving our region right now. Even if we hired someone a month before we wanted to open the application period, there's still a good chance that we could keep within the timeline we've set out in these proposals. It just depends on division of labor and if Megan McFaul is able to take some and how the training is going. So there are a few factors in the air, but my understanding is the job description exists, has not been posted. A memorandum of understanding with USU and the county is in the works and hopefully should be finished within the next week.
All right, yeah, thank you, Ben. Any other questions for Ben or, or discussion? Evan or Sarah, do you have anything for the conversation?
No, it looks good, thanks.
Thank you. All right.
Oh, I, Ben, I agree that the, well, I like the definition that you came up for, with for economic diversification. I think it's nice.
Thank you. Thank you, that's great.
All right, thank you, Sarah. Yeah, and again, appreciate how well this has been put out to the community and, and vetted again. About it too.
Thank you so much.
All right, so if there's no further discussion, I have a motion by Mary and a second by Josie. All in favor of the motion, raise your hand, say aye.
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 Motion passes seven, nothing.
Thank you all so much.
All right, thanks. Uh, we're up to item D, approving SkyWest seasonal modification of flight schedule at Kennylands Regional Airport. And Tammy Howland, interim airport director. Is Tammy on Zoom? I saw her earlier.
I am here.
Awesome, welcome Tammy.
Thank you. Quickly, for those of you that don't know me, I'm Tammy Howland. Been at the airport here for about eleven years. And I'm currently filling in as interim director. And tonight, I've presented to you, did you all receive the attachment for this request? The seasonal schedule?
Yes, we did, yeah, it's part of our package.
This is a routine formality that we do every year. Part of the essential air service contract is the airline presents the airport with its routes for the year. Basically, this is not, they're not telling us any times for flights or anything like that. This is how many routes will be served weekly, and then the timeframes of those. So for March twenty-eighth through May fifth, twelve weekly routes. And then so on, during our peak seasons, you see that those bump up to eighteen weekly routes. And so you all can read those. I won't go through every one of them. But like I said, this is fairly routine and I believe this is roughly the same schedule we've had the past two seasons. So if you have any questions, let me know. Otherwise, it's pretty straightforward.
All right, thank you, Tammy. Does anybody have a question for Tammy? All right, nor do I, so I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the SkyWest seasonal modification of flight schedule as shown in the attachments.
Thank you, Mary. Second.
I'll second.
Josie, I have a motion by Mary and a second by Josie. Any further discussion?
Um, yeah, I just, um, I mean, I, I'm in favor of the motion. But I think in the, in past years, there's been some discussion about whether the schedule was, is it being optimized for, you know, tourists visiting Moab? Or is it optimized for Moab residents who want to fly somewhere else? And I think, I mean, I, I think it's too, too late to go into that this year. And I think also there's a lot of constraints. It's pilot shortages. But just a heads up for a year from now, when we have a similar discussion, or maybe, you know, less than a year from now. We might want to put some thought into, um, you know, get, ma- making sure that the schedule is, is. Because, you know, the, the federal subsidy they get is not a subsidy for tourism, it's a subsidy for people who live in small towns and have trouble traveling. And I just want to make sure that we're getting the best deal we can from the EAS contract for, you know, the WORSE residents.
Right, good, good point, Kevin. And it does look like in the winter, the, the slowest season, there's seven weekly round trips. That'd be one flight a day on average.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, any further discussion? I have a motion on the table. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand, say aye.
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 Didn't get anything from Evan, is that a?
That was an aye, thank you.
Thank you, Evan, appreciate it. Passes seven, nothing. We are on to item E, approving the reclassification of the part-time library assistant to a full-time benefited library assistant. Renee Baker, Personnel Services Director, and welcome back, Renee.
Thank you. It's good to be back at work. Carrie is out, I'm traveling today, so she's unable to join us, but I sure can reach out if we have any questions about this one. Um, but essentially, the teen service desk just needs a little bit more coverage over at the library as operations are increasing. And they are back open to the public. Um, we have, generally, when we budget for the library part-time hours, we kind of just give them a pool of hours to, to get the coverage that they need. So Carrie is, is proposing to decrease the pool of hours to cover the benefit cost for this position. Um, and just have a full-time coverage for the team desk. So the fiscal impact is just really about the benefit cost there, the thirty-three thousand. And that'll be covered by the decrease of hours. I'm going forward into future budgets. Part-time hours will just likely, the pool of part-time hours will likely be less just to cover that additional full-time position.
All right, uh, thank you, Renee. Any questions for Renee?
Can I make the motion? Great. I, I move to approve the reclassification of the part-time teen services library assistant, grade seven to a full-time benefited teen services library assistant, also grade seven, effective April twentieth, twenty twenty-two. And authorize the update to the twenty twenty-two Grand County Employee Pay Plan.
Thanks, Kevin. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Josie. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand, say aye. All right, and again, I missed Evan. He might have gotten kicked off. Okay, so motion passes five, nothing. We are up to agenda item F, approving the step adjustment of five current sheriff's office employees. And again, Renee Baker.
All right, so you may remember in September of twenty twenty-one, we did pass the sheriff's office new hire policy where any new hire could come on with, with one step for every one year of previous certified law enforcement experience. And that's created kind of just a disparity within the department as far as some of the employees who came on prior to this policy being passed who did have quite a bit of previous law enforcement experience. So that would be experience not earned at Grand County. So we're proposing that those five would be issued those steps for recruitment and retention. For this year, the, the approximate cost of that was the seventy-four thousand. You'll notice that I, we noted minimum um, in the, in the agenda summary. We didn't cover, we didn't count in any overtime or on-call pay for that. Uh, but the sheriff has proposed to put a hiring freeze on the two, two of the five vacant deputy positions to cover that within the budget for this year.
Um, I just had a question, Renee, um, sort of relating to. Are these all of the employees in the sheriff's office who could have something like this applied in the future?
Yes, so this would be, this would be, from understanding your question, right? These five are the only five with the, with previous law enforcement experience that was earned outside of Grand County. If anybody coming into Grand County were to have previous law enforcement experience, they would be under our new hire policy for the one-for-one.
And how long ago were they hired? Or it's obviously a range, but.
Um, it is a range. I would say, um, most of them are over about five years. Um, I think two of them are about five years or more. Um, and then we have quite a few longtime staffers and then a few are pretty new within the last two or three years. So sorry, that's kind of a nondescript answer, but.
That's okay.
Before the, before the new policy was, was issued as well.
So my, um, one more follow-up question to that is, um, other departments in the county, I know. Are you thinking of applying something like this to all of the departments or is it just for the sheriffs because it's a one-for-one kind of?
Um, it is just for the sheriff's office. It is a one-for-one. Currently, the countywide policy is that every two years of directly related experience we will apply one step. So there is already kind of a, a different policy for the sheriff's office. Um, law enforcement, I'd say nationwide is probably one of the hardest to recruit and retain for. Once you get somebody trained, they will hop off and go to a different organization offering similar policies, so.
And is the one-for-one step standard, uh, more or less standard across most law enforcement organizations?
Yep, we are seeing it more and more, especially across the state of Utah. I think everyone's trying to be competitive with that one-for-one policy.
Right. Any other questions for Renee or entertain a motion?
Sure, thanks, Commissioner. I move to approve the suspension of personnel policy, resolution twenty-nine sixty-eight to approve the step adjustments as proposed for the sheriff's office staff effective April twentieth, twenty twenty-two. And authorize an update to the twenty twenty-two Employee Pay Plan.
All right, I have a motion by Kevin, second. Second by Commissioner McGann. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Sarah, I didn't see your vote.
Uh, aye, sorry.
Thank you. Uh, motion passes six to nothing. We're up to item G, approving the twenty twenty-two Bronco Safari Special Event Permit. Angie Book, the old Spanish Trail Arena Director. Hi, Angie.
Hello, everyone. Um, so tonight, I am presenting the Bronco Safari event. This event has happened for multiple years. Um, so the first Bronco Safari is being dated back to twenty, two thousand and two. Um, classic Bronco owners come from all over for five days of organized trail rides and a show and shine at the old Spanish Trail Arena. The Utah Bronco Club is a nonprofit organization with longstanding club members that look forward to this event each year as if it was a family reunion. This club engages in multiple charity and community service projects throughout Utah. This year, the Bronco Safari is expecting approximately a hundred vehicles with an estimated two hundred and fifty participants. Each trail will be capped at twenty-five vehicles per trail, and I have received all referral agencies' approvals.
All right, thanks, Angie. Any questions for Angie?
Um, yeah, so, so this is, this event has been happening continuously since two thousand and two, roughly? So it's been every, roughly every year?
Yeah, I'm in the beginning, it started in the Colorado area and then it moved over to Moab.
So how, how long has it been in the Moab area?
Um, I, my records go back to. My records go back to two thousand and seventeen. As far as when it actually started here, I'd have to do more research, but as far as my computer records, I go back to two thousand and seventeen.
Yeah, thank you, Angie. Any, any other questions for Angie?
I have a question. Um, how serendipitous that the special event permit section was also in the packet because I read through it. And in there, it says that events should apply a hundred and twenty days in advance so that they can go through the right process. But, I mean, maybe I'm mistaken, but it looks like this event is applying less than thirty days before the planned event. And was it able to go through the Special Event Advisory Committee?
I am, so that's something that the Special Event Committee requests is a hundred and twenty days. But most of my events roll over and are already on the calendar, so I know it's happening. Um, this event was delayed as far as paperwork because of two reasons. One, um, it's a club event, so they are waiting for the president to be voted on to do the paperwork. And two, they thought they had to get all of their paperwork together before they could start submitting. So they are waiting for their insurance to be finalized and their SITL permit, which I have all of that.
And I can add to that, um, in the ordinance, we do have the exception for if it's under a hundred and twenty days. It can be considered depending on staff time and resources. And I think a number of the special events we've seen coming through are cutting it pretty close in terms of just days, not days out, but well under a hundred and twenty days. And I, I want to say. And I want to say that that's because of COVID and kind of the uncertainty of should I proceed? And I also know that we've created, maybe I've created just a lot of confusion with the special events and changing the terms and what folks need to do and what qualifies as a special event and requires a permit. So I, I would say that that's one thing to note is it can be under a hundred and twenty days and something we should tighten up doing forward, but.
All right, thank you, Mallory. Any other questions, discussion, or a motion?
I move to approve the Utah Bronco Safari Special Event Permit under the currently approved Special Event Ordinance.
Thank you, Mary. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner McGann and a second by Commissioner Hadeen. Further discussion?
I, let's see. So my understanding is that this event wasn't, didn't go through the Special Event Advisory Committee. Is that true?
Everybody's looked at, everyone's reviewed it.
Well, so it's hard for me to vote for this event because I open up the Moab happenings and I look at April ninth Jeep Safari, April fourteenth Jeep Safari Expo, April twenty-seventh Cruise Moab Toyota four-by-four event, April thirtieth Car Show, Bronco Safari. And that's, I mean, that's like almost two straight months of four-by-four events in the spring. And I feel, the reason why we created a Special Events Advisory Committee is so that they could weigh all of these events together and make decisions about who has been around the longest and what kinds of things that we want to subject the populace of Moab to over and over again every year. So I have a really hard time voting for this, knowing that it hasn't gone through the process. And it's a relatively new event for the area. I know it's kind of last minute, so it, it's it's hard for the event organizers. But that's why we created the process and yeah, that's my opinion.
Thank you, Sarah. Do I have any, is there any other comment or discussion? Kevin?
Yeah, I, I share some of Sarah's concerns. I thought either the upcoming agenda item where we talk about the special event ordinance in general, it might be another place where we could discuss that. I do, I mean, in, in general, I, I think we have too many events here and, and we need to start being more selective about which events are more disruptive and which are less. I mean, this isn't a huge event in terms of numbers. It is full-size vehicles rather than something else, which is maybe a market in its, its favor. But I guess I just like, I, you know, I've been asking for a while and I, I think in the future I'll be asking more persistently. I do think we need some kind of more holistic global view on the events we permit and we shouldn't be just making decisions on one event at a time without thinking about cumulative effects. And, and so I'm hoping maybe we can get a future revision of the Special Events Ordinance where that's built into the process where like quarterly, we say, okay, these people have implied, we can only say yes to, you know, sixty percent of them, which sixty percent should that be? That, that's kind of the way I'd like these discussions to be, rather than individual events becoming, coming before us that ran in times through the year. So I'm, I'm going to vote for this one, but I, I definitely do want to see our process continue to evolve. I know, I know we've made reforms in special events and I think those have all been good changes in the right direction, but I still think we have a ways to go.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin. Good, good points.
Yeah, I'm generally in agreement with both Kevin and Sarah looking at this. You know, I agree that overall I would like to see more criteria, more proactive criteria of what kinds of events we're sort of seeking for Grand County. And maybe that is already starting to exist. I will be on the Special Events Advisory Committee, but have yet to, you know, actually interact with that process from that point of view. But I'm pretty familiar with the application process from the event side. And so looking at this, you know, the one hundred and twenty days, and I know that the, the process is a little conflated right now. It's also being kind of overhauled right now. So kind of knowing that, I, I see this application as having sort of, you know, the, the right amount of merit within the current system. So as far as it doing its due diligence within the current system, it's, you know, there. But I definitely agree that the caliber of events that we want in the county can be perhaps up for review at a higher level.
Thank you, Justin. Any other discussion, comments?
No, I, I do like that idea, Kevin. Being able to parse out, you know, what our overall objective is and maybe we say we want twenty percent. I mean, I hate to put hard numbers, you know, our motorized vehicle events or whatever, but, but I do like that idea. So something that's definitely a future consideration.
All right. Anything else? I would entertain a motion on this one. Oh, I'm sorry, right. We already, Mary made the motion. Sorry, we have a motion on the table by Commissioner McGann and second by Commissioner Hadeen. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All right. I don't see Evan here, so it looks like the motion, I mean, all in, right. All those opposed to the motion, please raise your hand or say aye. I'm sorry. Okay, so it looks like the motion passes five to one with Commissioner Stock voting in opposition. Thank you. Had so many unanimous motions in a row. I tripped up on that one. We are up to item H, approving the purchase of scoreboards for the old Spanish Trail Arena ballfields. And back to Angie Book, the old Spanish Trail Arena Director.
I am, so this one is to approve the purchase of two scoreboards. And then the next item would be the installation of them. But this one is just to purchase the scoreboards. And the recreation board has elected to use a portion of their allocated funds to purchase the scoreboards for the baseball fields at the Old Spanish Trail Arena. The recreation board will be reimbursed to the county in full. The scoreboards were in the original construction plan, but were cut due to budget requirements. The recreation board decided that they would purchase the scoreboards at a later date after construction. The Old Spanish Trail Arena will be purchasing the scoreboards directly and having them drop ship to the arena. And then Kevin Bowden Construction will be handling installation of the scoreboard.
All right, thanks, Angie. Any questions for Angie on this?
Yeah, just in terms of priorities for spending. Like if, you know, magically the entire recreation special service district budget were, came under your budget, Angie, is this, do you think this is a good use of ten thousand dollars? Is this the right prioritization?
You get a lot of requests for scoreboards. There's all kinds of projects that could be done out here. Can ten thousand dollars be spent somewhere else? Absolutely. But the prices on these items keep going up, so I don't see, I think if we don't move now, they're just going to get more expensive. And then just over the past couple of months trying to get this processed, the prices went up drastically. I know that's something that the recreation boards wanted for a while. And same with the community. Be able to do a baseball event and softball event out here. So the requests come in for it.
Okay, I, I, it's just, I, I guess I'm making just a general point that these special services funded through mineral lease monies. We need to make sure that the money is being spent in ways that we think is good. Otherwise, we can allocate the mineral lease monies to a different place. But it sounds like you're saying that this seems like a reasonable purchase to you.
Anybody have anything to add? Trish, Trish is the current REC board representative.
You, there's a really good board and I think they're, they're thinking critically about their budget and where to appropriate those funds, so, yeah. But, but I think that's a great statement.
Yeah, and I was the previous board representative to REC and the scoreboard had been talked about when I was there as well. And it is a good board and there's some good discussion there. And I think it was well, well thought out.
And I like that we're using a local contractor to install them, so.
And that's our next agenda item, right? All right, any further discussion on this or would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Trish.
I move to approve the purchase of two scoreboards from varsity scoreboards in the amount of nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars.
I have a motion. I'll second. Motion by Commissioner Hadeen, second by Commissioner Walker. Any further discussion? We'll call for a vote. All in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Looks like the motion passes unanimously, six, nothing. All right, on to item I, approving independent contractor agreement with Kevin Bowden Construction for Old Spanish Trail Arena Ball Field Scoreboards. And back to Angie.
So this is a follow-up to the scoreboards. Kevin Bowden Construction would be doing the actual installation of the scoreboards. And this, this price includes, it's actually a two-part construction. One would be the installation of the scoreboard and then also putting the hoods on the backstop of the baseballs. Baseball fields to stop the foul balls. And that would be for safety reasons. And that also includes some subcontracting through A and E for the electric and then also the engineering plan. Installation of the scoreboard.
Right, any questions for this, for Angie, similar to the last item? I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move to approve the signature of the independent contractor agreement with Kevin Bowden Construction for the installation of the Osta Ball Field Scoreboards in field backstop hoods in the amount of thirty-four thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars.
Thank you. Do I have a second? All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Hadeen and a second by Commissioner McGann. Any further discussion? Calling for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand or say aye. Looks like the motion passes unanimously, six to nothing. Agenda item J, approving amendment to professional services agreement with the SCJ Alliance to include a sub-area plan for the Book Cliffs, John Gunther Planning and Zoning Director.
Thank you, Jacques, and good evening or afternoon, whatever it is, late afternoon. Thank you, got a busy agenda here. So this is in some of an alteration to our land use consultant contract, a small one, we believe. And adding the Book Cliff area plan into the land use study. There was a bit of urgency earlier, but now that we have a little more time, the goal is to modify the plan in a small way, as I mentioned, and include it into the land use study, which should be finalized and prepared for the county commission formally at the end of June. We should probably make a small amendment to the motion because it's actually signing a contract. So it should be, I move to direct staff to develop a small area plan for the Book Cliff area, incorporating it into the general plan as part of the land use update. And in finalizing the amendment to the contract, something like that. So prepared to answer any questions. Most of this was drafted internally by staff, but we, we need some fine tuning, we believe. And it'll kind of spruce it up a bit more, give it a little bit more content and, and more reference as far as the area is concerned. So prepared to answer any questions.
Yeah, I, I think you may have just answered the question I had, which is, I was just trying to, given that we already have something, you know, some version of the book plus plan already written, thanks to Lisa and others. This is just additional wordsmithing and sprucing it up and adding stuff, so.
I have a question about the process. So why, why would it be included in the land use update? Why not just adopt this plan and then it is referenced in the general plan?
Well, because it's land use, thank you, Sarah, because it's land use related and it's so connected to the land use analysis. I think it's a lot more appropriate. We're going to be making a major change, the whole land use section in the general plan because it needs a lot of work, as you probably know. So it's, and that's kind of a stutter step because the general plan would be going forward. Obviously, it's gone through a public hearing already with the planning commission. So this was caught up in the middle of some of that, just through the process. There's, it's not the only thing. There's a number of other changes to the general plan, significant changes to the general plan. So we just saw it as a good land use amendment. Hopefully that helps.
Anyone else have a question for John?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mary.
I move to direct staff to develop a small area plan for the Book Cliffs area, incorporating it into the general plan, two thousand and thirty, to, as part of the land used update and finalizing the amendment to the contract.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
I guess I have one more question about timeline. So when we originally talked about this and put work into drafting that, it was with the desire to adopt it in the two-month type of timeframe, because there'd already been a lot of public comment on it over the years. And so if we're getting a land use update in June, but we're not adopting the general plan till much later, what, what, what's the timeline on actually adopting this small area plan then?
Yeah, the goal would be to adopt the general plan at your next commission meeting, which is May third in a public hearing, and then to amend the whole land use section in July.
So why don't we just adopt the Book Cliffs area plan with the general plan on that timeframe instead of including it with the land use update?
Sarah, it's just making it consistent with the general plan and the language in the general plan. You know, it's better, I think, to be more complete in, in how we adapt the general plan. There's a lot of gaps in it and the land use section is so big and has so many challenges in it. It's, I think, it will, this will present us with, and hopefully, I mean, you're right, sometimes these things get delayed. But the goal is to actually incorporate and just wrap it into the plan itself, rather than tweaking the general plan and then going back and massaging it again after it's been adopted. Because that's what will happen. It'll need to be redrafted.
Okay, thanks for answering my questions. I'm just not that clear about all the, the complicated process of adopting this giant general plan.
And so the bottom line is that the book, this Book Cliff Small Area Plan will be officially adopted in July then? Is that the plan timeframe?
It'll be adopted into the general plan as part of the main land use amendment, yeah.
In, in July?
In July. That's the goal.
Right. Comments, questions? All right, I have a motion on the table. Motion by Commissioner McGann and a second by Commissioner Hadeen. No further discussion. I'll call for a vote. Actually wait for Mary to rejoin us and call for a vote. All right, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand or say aye. Looks like that passes unanimously, six to nothing. Thank you. Agenda item K, approving disposition of real property parcels. Twenty-six S twenty-two E three, five, eight, four, zero, one. Twenty-six S twenty-two E three, five, eight, four, zero, two. Twenty-seven S twenty-two E zero, one, four, two, zero, zero. And three, nine, zero, 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 D, zero. Owned by Grand County and located within San Juan County, Utah. Chris Baird, Strategic Development Director.
Sorry about all those numbers, Jacques.
A lot of zeros to focus in on, on that last one.
Yeah, I mean, they don't have official addresses, so that's just the only accurate way to describe them. So anyway, we had a public hearing, our last meeting a couple of weeks ago and held that up until the Wednesday thereafter and didn't receive any public comments. So this is a part of a statutory process to enable us to begin to investigate and accept offers for these parcels. It doesn't obligate us to sell any of them, but if we do want to initiate the process and even entertain offers, then this, we'd have to approve their dis- then this, we'd have to approve their disposition, which is what's before you tonight. And the three tracts of land compose of four parcels. There's a parcel out on the highway, which, or two parcels out on the highway, which combined compose four-point-three-one acres. And then there's another parcel, forty acres, which is the old motocross track out there. And then another twenty-one-point-seven-three acres, which is located on the old airport airstrip there. And so, happened to answer any other questions. We've got a, Christina helped me put together a bid form, and then I also put some parcel information together in this packet here, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, did we receive any public comment, the public comment period? Nope, we didn't, okay. Yeah, Kevin. So, I think sometime in the past when we discussed this, we agreed that we should give San Juan County a heads-up, just to, you know, set a good example for collaborating on issues that have impacts across the county line. We were talking with Mac yesterday, and he apparently hadn't heard about this, so I just wanted to make sure with Chris that maybe in the near, very near future, you could talk with Mac just to let him know what's going on.
Well, I'll talk with him again. I did, I did talk with him. We met at GWSSA a few months ago, and I brought it up to him then. So he just must have forgot.
Okay.
Yeah, I also sent an email into them, but yeah, I can certainly notify them again. I've done it twice already.
Okay, well, maybe twice is enough. Sorry, I, yeah.
He indicated he hadn't heard about it, so.
I think he just maybe, it was, you know, I brought it up just in conversation when we were chatting at GWSSA a few months ago. So he may have just not registered the conversation, you know.
And I guess also, I just wanted to convey, I think these parcels came up in our discussion yesterday, because he was wondering, you know, could we use this for, like, you know, employee housing, that kind of thing, which is an idea that's come up on this side of the county line as well. I, I'm not suggesting we should change course or anything, but I just wanted folks to be aware that, you know, there's, that idea is out there. I'm not endorsing that idea, but we need to, it's definitely worth discussing. Decide what to do eventually.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and I think, you know, the possibilities, you know, might be selling it and repurchasing property closer to Moab for affordable housing, or investing in a Royal Crossing. You know, a project that's already got infrastructure and full zoning approval and all that, and is closer to town. So that would be, you know, my suggestion over trying to develop something so far from Moab. You know, I think it'd be a good opportunity for San Juan County. But for us, I think it would make more sense to sell the property and reinvest in, like, a Royal Crossing, or some other parcel that's closer to town. But, you know, these are all things that we would consider down the road. Like I say, at this point, it's just a matter of entertaining offers, which will give us, you know, a better idea of what their market value is, and what our options are. But there's a lot more to consider before we actually decide to sell any of this.
Yeah, certainly. Anyone else have anything to add, Sarah? It looks like.
Well, the only one I'm hesitant about selling is that one that's part of the airport that's closer to more of the developed residential areas in Spanish Valley, because it does seem with all this talk about tiny home parks or anything like that, maybe we would want to work with San Juan County on some zoning and then sell it or something, to ensure that it turned into something good. But I'm also willing to entertain offers and understand the value of the property, and continue thinking about this and other opportunities to try to materialize something like a tiny home park, or more of that RV permanent resident housing options.
Yeah, I think, you know, there's some possibility of discussing deed restrictions. Obviously, deed restrictions would decrease the value, but, you know, if you, if for us, you know, it's important that it gets used for a specific purpose, then, you know, we might consider deed restrictions, and then offering a discount on the market value for, in exchange for a deed restriction.
Right. And before final sale, this would have to come back to the commission, is that right, Chris?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and so, there would have to be, you know, an offer made, then state law actually gives us the opportunity to discuss these things in closed session for negotiation purposes. But ultimately, the decision has to be made in a public meeting, and we would, you know, sign a typical real estate purchase contract. You know, and there may be, you know, deed restrictions involved, too, if we go down that road. But, yeah, like I say, at all, at this point, we're just opening the process up, and then every step along the way would have to come back to you guys.
Great, thank you.
Just one point on the distance of that property from town for affordable housing. What I'm hearing from various people is concern over the whole Willow Springs area being shut down, and that's where a lot of folks who are employed here often live in their cars, and then just, people are driving all the way up to the mountains or Willow Springs or whatever to be able to park. And so I don't think that that's an unreasonable distance to try to maybe figure out something if we can't, if we can't figure out another place to host workforce in that way.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think that there's, you know, obviously, since it's in San Juan County, it's a little challenging to establish zoning and whatever, and who knows, you know, we wouldn't be in control of that process, but we could, you know, participate, I suppose, in rezoning. It has recently been rezoned already, all these parcels have the last few years, and so they went through a process to establish the zoning for them already. But, like I say, I think, you know, we'll just see what the offers come in and brainstorm all different possibilities. You know, like I said, if we're going to use these properties to facilitate affordable housing, you know, I would probably be more interested in either trading it out for a parcel closer to town, or, you know, reselling it and repurchasing, or investing in a project closer to town. You know, we've got other property within Grand County that some of the proceeds of these sales could also go into for development purposes. So there's a lot of different options. But I would generally, you know, advise, you know, trying, if at all possible, to facilitate affordable housing in Grand County and closer to Moab, if possible. But you're right, I think there's going to be a lot of fallout from, you know, the Willow Springs, Don Wells area being more regulated. So. Yeah, I don't know what to say. I mean, I don't want to, like, you know, you know, it obviously brings up the question of whether or not we'd need more camp parks for short-term accommodations, because even though there are people that live out there, long-term, they're a tiny fraction, really, of who, of all the folks that are really out there, you know, maybe like, you know, one percent are people that work here.
Yeah, that's a, I think that's a whole nother discussion for another time, for sure.
Yeah.
Any other comments on this, or would someone like to?
I'll make a motion. I move to approve the disposition of parcels, twenty-six S, twenty-two E, thirty-five, eighty-four, oh, one, twenty-six S, twenty-two E, thirty-five, eighty-four, oh, two, seven, twenty-seven S, twenty-two E, zero, fourteen, two-hundred, and zero, 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 thirty-nine, zero, 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 D, zero, owned by Grand County and located within San Juan County, Utah.
Thank you, Mary. I have a motion. Would someone like to take a second? Oh, I'll second. Second by Kevin. Any further discussion?
I think Mary missed one of the zeros.
I had to count, there was five there.
I have to start saying I'm joking.
I guess I did, I did want to emphasize it, and this is stated clearly in the agenda summary, but, you know, we're not, in voting to do this, we're not agreeing that we want to sell it. Absolutely. Other things, and I think, you know, lots, you know, Chris mentioned several different possibilities just now, and we've also talked about using it to find out, building the courthouse. I'm certainly not in favor of, you know, I think land is a very valuable resource for local governments, so I'm not persuaded we should sell these, but I think it is worth continuing the discussion. And in particular, Chris points out that even if we wanted to have land rather than money, we might do better to sell these and acquire parcels in Grand County. Yeah, thank you, Kevin. I'll call for a vote. Motion by Mary, and second by Kevin. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Aye. Looks like this one also passes unanimously, six to nothing. On to item L, approving volunteer appointment to the Thompson Special Service District Water Board, and that is me as the TSSD representative. The TSSD, we, I was sat in on the interviews, we interviewed, we received three applicants. Two of the applicants weren't considered because they lived outside of the service district, and state law requires that they live inside the service district. Ron Penney does qualify, and we had an interview with him. I thought he was well-qualified, and the right person that we're looking for. The board passed him unanimously at the last meeting, and comes to us now. Any discussion?
So I just, when I was engaging with Ron, but that was a while ago, and Gabe was there when we did the cleanup. He was living in Junction, but if he moved to Thompson.
He has moved to Thompson. He's registered to vote in Thompson. That's the qualifier. Yeah, but yeah, right, very good point. We looked into that.
Okay, you did.
We did, yes. Any other discussions on that? I've entertained a motion.
I move to approve the appointments of Ron Penney to serve on the Thompson Special Service District Water Board with the term expiring twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-two.
Thanks, Mary. Second. I'll second. Second, I have a motion on the table by Commissioner McGann, and a second by Commissioner Walker. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Say aye. Looks like this passes unanimously, six to nothing. Item M, approving volunteer appointment to the Travel Council Advisory Board. Vice Chair McGann.
Yes, the Travel Council had their meeting, and they interviewed two applicants, and they voted unanimously to approve Alex Borcheski. So I will make a motion to approve the appointment of Alice, Alex Borcheski to serve on the Travel Council Advisory Board with the term expiring twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you, Mary. Second.
Second that.
All right, I have a second by Vice Chair, or a motion by Vice Chair McGann, and a second by Commissioner Hedin. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand or say aye. All opposed. And Commissioner Kovach said she was abstaining earlier, so the motion passes five to nothing with Commissioner Kovach abstaining. On to item N, approving resolution of support for the Thirty by Thirty Initiative. Commissioner Stock.
Unmute. Okay, um, let's see. So if y'all have read the resolution in the packet, I'll just speak to it a little bit. But I brought this resolution, which is supporting a national Thirty by Thirty initiative to help bolster support nationally and globally for this idea. And I believe we're on a path to be able to contribute to this locally with our public lands plan, but this is not an endorsement of that locally. It's just briefly, in order to preserve biodiversity and ecological function across the globe, and to maintain the Earth's ability to adjust to climate change, scientists agree that we have to start conserving more land and water than we already do, specifically thirty percent of land and water by 2030, moving towards even more after that. And here, the term conservation is broad, or always, it's broad. And I just want to emphasize that it can still include working landscapes, private lands, federal and state lands that preserve ecological function and integrity. So, the Biden administration has been stressing how important it is that private sector people get engaged with this, and that that's going to be a huge part of this. So it's not, this is not trying to, like, make all lands federally preserved or something. It's trying to conserve working landscapes as well. And, yeah, I think it's important to highlight this. I brought this to the Grand County Commission because, well, we're in a state that doesn't often support initiatives like this, so I think our voice is important. And also, it's important to highlight that lands deserve protection because of their inherent ecological function and importance in mitigating climate change, not just because they're iconic or prized for recreation by various groups. And I think oftentimes, when we're talking about preserving land or public lands, our economy is so dependent on recreation that that's what we focus on. But this initiative is sort of, is acknowledging the inherent value of a functioning ecology, and how important that is to our future as humans on this planet. Other questions?
Thank you, Sarah. Any questions for Commissioner Stock? Sure, I have some small ones. So there's, in the recitals or the resolution, it looks like on the, I guess, the very last, whereas there's this link to DEA stats available here, is that something we need to fill, or am I looking at an old version?
No, I just, that's where I got that.
Oh, I see. So it's referring to the previous numbers. It's not a placeholder for additional numbers?
Yeah.
Okay.
We can delete it. I just thought it.
That's fine. And then I guess you've also got letters to the President and Secretary of Interior. I'm assuming that this is part of some unified effort from local governments, and we're going to.
Let's see, I was sent one, well, there's a Utah effort, which is, there's a Utah effort to engage local governments, and that's where the one letter to President Biden comes from. And then, I think that's called Utah Thirty by Thirty Initiative. And then the Western Leaders Network, which is a really cool organization that tries to engage Western leaders on different public lands initiatives, sent out that other letter to the Department of Interior and is engaging them on that. So this would be adding our voice to, yeah, unified fights of local governments to try to push for more conservation of land.
Thanks. Yeah, I actually attended a local nonprofit, Public Land Solution, gave a presentation on the America Beautiful Initiative to Trail Mix a couple of months ago, and it was a great presentation, and I think it's an excellent initiative that I'm happy to support. Yeah. Anyone else entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Josie.
I move to adopt a resolution supporting the Thirty by Thirty Campaign to Protect Thirty Percent of U.S. Lands and Inland Waters and Thirty Percent of U.S. Ocean by 2030, and to authorize the chair's signature on the two related letters.
I have a motion by Josie. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Sarah. Any further discussion or comment? Just thanks, Sarah, for taking the initiative to put this together.
Yes, thank you very much.
Yes. All right. I have a motion on the table by Commissioner Kovach, and a second. I have a motion on the table by Commissioner Kovach and a second by Commissioner Stock. All in favor of the motion, raise your hands. Say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously at six to nothing. Onto agenda item O, adopting ordinance repealing and replacing chapter 8.16, special events of the Grand County General Ordinances and Related Ordinance Number 643. Mallory Nassau, Commission Administrator.
Okay, everybody's favorite subject. So what is in front of you is it is a version of the ordinance that will hopefully change again in the coming weeks. We didn't include in this one the different application types that we're proposing. We foresee at least proposing some fee schedule changes, rolling the business licenses into the permit. And I'm sure there are other ones that I'm forgetting. But what is in front of you primarily is changing the COVID-19 requirements. And there is some language in there that's pretty vague, but it does include, you know, a condition that special event permitees comply with any health, state, local requirements. I don't remember the exact wording, but it is on page 10 under conditions. So with that, I'm sure y'all might have questions or some language you might want us to add.
Mary?
Since we're going to be having changes again quite soon, do you want us to pass this tonight or postpone it to have everything done?
Well, I think the goal was to bring it to you all, knowing that we'd have to do it again soon, just because there are a lot of events, including outdoor events, that are kind of held up by this. And while we want the safety component to remain in there, I'm hopeful that the section with just the condition that they will comply is sufficient. And I guess another perk, I don't know if there's perks related to COVID. But with the another amendment coming, it would give us a few weeks to see where we're at with COVID and if things need to be stuffed back up. But for right now, we wanted it to kind of match our policy.
Great, thank you, Mallory.
And so the, in the packet, there's a clean version and then a red line. And looking at the red line, it seems like all, all the changes are very minor except for striking that COVID section at the end. So that's the extent of the changes?
Yes, that is it. And I, maybe out of turn saying this, but with the discussion of the prior special event decision, I would say if we are going to proceed in the coming weeks, which we, we plan to do that, we actually have another red line in the works, that it would be a great time to, I can send something out to all of you to see your thoughts on what we should incorporate and if there's any kind of consideration or weighted kind of approval that other counties or municipalities use that we could do a field acquisition for.
Yeah, maybe we should try to have some kind of discussion, you know, not in the main meeting, but just, I know there's sort of logistical and organizational challenges to doing what I was suggesting earlier. But I do, my, my sense is that most of the commission does want to proceed in that direction. And it's just a matter of, you know, how do we translate that into rewriting the ordinance and do it in ways that the Special Events Committee finds, you know, practical to implement. And so, yeah, so I, hopefully we can have, start having detailed discussions on that in the appropriate form.
Absolutely. And I, I'm hoping that with the other two application plans coming into play, assuming they're approved, that would naturally take on a piece of that just because they would be some of the ones that are reoccurring and also have to meet certain conditions already. So getting those pre-approved, it just could help with the scheduling and making sure that it's those ones that are coming back again in good standing are getting scheduled first.
Any other questions for Mallory?
I can make the motion.
Great, thank you, Kevin.
I, I move to repeal chapter 8.16, special events of the Grand County General Ordinances and Related Ordinance Number 643, and adopt new chapter 8.16 special events and as set forth in attached ordinance and is exhibit A.
All right, motion by Kevin. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Trish. Any further discussion?
Um, I do, I mean, it seems like this is the ordinance that we amend the most often, but I actually think that's okay because I think it means a special committee, committee is engaged and is trying to incrementally improve the process. So I'm, I'm happy to keep amending this special event ordinance for as long as it takes. Don't be shy about bringing more changes in the future.
Care for what you wish.
All right, we'll call for a vote. Motion by Commissioner Walker and second by Commissioner Hedin. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Say aye. And it looks like the motion passes unanimously, which is five, nothing with Commissioner McGinn and Clapper absent. Is it six o'clock yet? It is just about six o'clock. Minute away by my clock. Would it be appropriate to do that now? I'll open up our public comment period. If there, there's no one in the chambers, but if there's anyone on Zoom who would like to make a public comment, now is the time to make that comment. And it does not look like we have anyone on Zoom who would like to make a comment. All right, we have, we're up to the consent agenda. And we have three items on the consent agenda today. Item P, ratifying the chair's signature on a common interest joint defense attorney work product in exchange of confidential information agreement. Item Q, approving memorandum of understanding with the Southeast Utah Raptorian Partnership. And item R, approving commission board and committee liaison reassignments. I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Kevin. Second.
Second.
Josie, motion to approve the consent agenda by Commissioner Walker and a second by Commissioner Kovach. Any other discussion on consent agenda? Call for a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand or say aye. Looks like that passes unanimously and that's six to nothing. We are on to our discussion item. Discussion on visitor messaging and visitor surveys related to noise and other impacts. And Commissioner Walker brought this item up.
Start, we're in the sequence. Yeah, so I wanted to discuss two related items. And I think the output is, you know, the possible outcome is that, you know, we give direction to staff to move forward on these two different projects. So one of them concerns UTV noise in residential neighborhoods. You know, it's, we've talked about a pretty wide variety of ways of addressing that problem. And this is just focusing on one, one slice of the raw pie of solutions, which is messaging, you know, just asking people to voluntarily try to quiet down. So this idea has come up in various smaller groups. I think Jacques was part of some of those discussions. I haven't come across any significant disagreements so far. And so I think we're ready to, you know, maybe direct staff to, you know, come up with some draft words, texts that will do it. And, and before they do that, we might want to give them some direction. So I, I think the proposal on the table, I mean, at the moment, or what I would suggest is ask people to not drive through UTV to, you know, let people know that it disturbs, you know, residents if you're driving a noisy UTV on a residential street and ask people not to do it. I think that's an appropriate message because it's long been our position that we would like to see legislation that makes that kind of behavior mandatory. I mean, so we have, as, you know, as a body, I think we are on record in many different ways saying, you know, if we were in charge of writing state code, you know, it would be mandatory, you know, people wouldn't have a choice. They just, UTVs would not be legal on residential streets. So I think it's pretty reasonable to ask people to voluntarily do what we already think is appropriate. So.
Right. And what we, I was in some of those meetings with Kevin when we talked about the responsible recreation messaging, et cetera. And we talked about mediums for that and some of the things that we had discussed were like ads in the local newspapers, billboards and other things. Can elaborate on that at all, Kevin?
Yeah, well, I guess I would, I mean, this is, I think, a mess. You know, that some of the things we're targeting people who are already here. I think this is more trying to target more widely and generally the, you know, the community of people who ride UTVs. So it might make sense to also do advertising, you know, either on social media and Facebook groups that are appropriate or just in the Salt Lake City and, you know, Western Colorado media markets. I don't know. But I think that's the kind of, that's, that's like a standard advertising decision. And I think we can ask our staff and consultants, you know, if we, if we want to give this message to as many people as possible, what's the best way to do it?
Yeah.
I think we could also ask them to draft, you know, just sample, you know, snap, snappier ways of saying what I would, the message was. I deliberately made it kind of long and cumbersome because I didn't want to say that I was suggesting the exact words we're going to use. I think we could consider that at a future meeting. But I think the purpose of this discussion is just to ask staff to develop options that we can consider at a future meeting.
I think keeping it, yeah, short and concise and polite is good.
I think that whole idea, and I know people, this is obviously not me coming up, but just like this idea that you, you know, you're driving or you're visiting, like it's your backyard, like it's your neighborhood, right? Because it's not just the, it's more speeding. And we actually just got an email today. I mean, people are just moving. And it's the acceleration at these really high rates. It's like when I sit and listen, when I'm in my yard, which is not in town, I can just hear this like, just like I'm stepping on the gas, right? Because it's cool in my mind. And so it's, it's not just in residential areas because it's just reverberating across the entire valley. How do we get that across? I understand you're on vacation, but.
Yeah, I wonder if there could be some like etiquette specifics too. I mean, I think there's a lot of layers to this and the subtext is that, you know, to get anywhere to use your ATV recreationally, you have to drive through residential neighborhoods unless you're trailering. So that's like the awkward subtext of, you know, this is our ask and why these things are so fundamentally incompatible for most of the people that live in those areas that are impacted. So I mean, I do, I do like the broader goal of just having the county very clearly backing up the voices of the majority of residents who are saying that they are really fed up with really gentle messaging just around the effects in people's neighborhoods. And then I think beyond that, it's like, what's the directive for people who are renting? You know, are they requesting trailers? Are they asking more questions? Are they maybe not renting? Is that even something we can, you know, say as part of our intention? Probably not, but that might be, you know, a consequence anyway. And I think especially with UTV noise, it, it is both like speeding and it's just sheer numbers. It's quantity. So, yeah, I mean, I'm kind of, you know, just throwing all those layers out there, even though it's not particularly helpful. But I think it's good to know that one message kind of alludes to another subtext or a question of, okay, what do you want us to do?
And Love, they did such a great job with Arches. I'm wondering if we could work with Love to do some targeting of people who are looking to, well, they know how to do it. They know how to, how many people that look up coming to Moab are going to UTV rounds, you know? And targeting those people with certain messages. Quiet, don't drive in large groups. That's a big problem.
Yeah, but, but I, I guess I'm suggesting at least one, one of our options should be because there's a simpler message, which is don't drive through residential streets, use a trailer instead. So.
And I do believe most rental companies at least offer free trailering or something like it. I think they assume that nobody's going to ask for it because everybody just wants to drive around. But when I was looking at a lot of the companies, just to see how many and what their operations, what their fleet capacities were, a lot of them advertised free trailering as an option. So whether they can actually back that up, I don't know, but I, you know, it's worth testing.
And everyone who arrives with their own ATV certainly arrived with it on a trailer.
Right.
Sarah, you look like you had something to say.
Oh, I'm just going to say there's this, this fine line. And I think if we farm this out to some communication company, maybe we could encourage them to use comedy instead of like, what's been happening when we try to advertise for like tread lightly or stay on the trails or whatever. We tried to do it by enticing people to look at the advertisement by having a sexy picture of a Jeep somewhere really nice. Maybe instead of that, which I think encourages more jeeping, we could take a comedy approach with like noise in the neighborhood and like different things getting interrupted by lots of ATV noise or something. But I don't know, I think it's tricky. But Kevin, I do think what you said, which is just strong, clear messaging that says, don't drive through residential neighborhoods. That's clear and I don't have a problem with that.
Don't drive over 15 miles an hour. I think the speed really makes a difference. But I do think keep.
Yeah, I've noticed on, on, oh, I've noticed on Mill Creek Drive because there's gravel, loose gravel, and everyone's going so slow. The, the drone that comes to my house this year is much less than it has been.
Wow, yeah. But I, I do agree with Kevin that it's simpler and less complicated and more just direct, short, concise is, you know.
Well, I, I think, you know, there could be various back and forths with, you know, whoever's working to develop these messages. And I, I think there is, as Josie and also Sarah alluded to, there's a lot of subtle nuances and implications about this. And so I think we're, I don't think we just want to farm it out to someone else and then just rubber stamp whatever they come up with. I think we're going to want to have input throughout the process. But, but I, I do think it's important. And Josie, you are mentioning the rental. I kind of think of this as main, you know, it's about all the ATVs, but I think especially the ones who are private. I think we have other tools to bring to bear for the ones that are rental and tourists, but that, that leaves out the people who are independently bringing vehicles here.
Right. Yeah, I was going to ask you whether, like, which of those two audiences? Because I can see the benefit of, you know, the kind of official county line being like, hey, UTV owners, please be respectful of our residential neighborhoods. Because a lot of, you know, people's personal complaints aren't really taken seriously by a lot of user groups. But I would also say that I think a lot of visitors who end up renting ATVs don't really know any of the backstory. They just think it's another kind of bucket list thing to do. And so I think also taking advantage of this kind of messaging around, just, you know, making people kind of take notice a little bit more as visitors of the way they choose their stay here and their impacts is also useful.
We're onto the second item on the, on the, so, so is it, what, actually, I guess, so it sounds like we should ask, I'm guessing, you know, August could be the point person to start moving the ball forward on some of this messaging. And we're not making final decisions about anything yet, but we want to start moving that direction. Is that, yeah, sounds, sounds right.
I, I am here if there's any questions for myself.
Okay. So, so did you hear most of that discussion, August?
Yep.
Okay, great.
It sounds like to me, my understanding of this would be, I think the first thing for me is to determine how much budget we have available for this. And then to, to determine, you know, how much we do of this in-house versus, um, you know, consulting with anybody else to work on this. And then really, you know, drive down on what's the messaging, who's the audience? And I think we can start working on that internally this week.
Okay, great, and, and I do, you know, it doesn't have to be perfect, so I, I think, you know, hopefully we can bring some actual messaging out there later this year.
Yeah.
So the, the other item, which I, I think also even, even more is going to involve August is, um, just some like survey research to understand the effects of, um, motorized disruption on visitors. You know, we, we know how it is for residents, we talk about that a lot. There's something that's also important that comes up is, you know, even, even if all we cared about was maximizing tourism revenue, we might want to take a different attitude toward motorized recreation, especially in town where it affects a lot of people. There was a survey we did last year that had just one or two questions that, um, pertain to that, I, you know, there was a few months ago, I presented the results of that. An agenda item, and so my idea is since we do have, you know, a good TRT budget for this kind of visitor research, that we should fund another survey that looks, you know, in a more detailed way at this. And I, I think, you know, maybe, I, I've talked with the folks at Loves Communication, they, they seem smart to me. I, I think they've got good ideas about doing surveys, so I, I think doing it via Loves would be good. But if August has a different preference or a different consultant, you know, he wants to work with, we could entertain that as well. But, um, I, I guess the idea would be to, you know, ask staff to work with consultants to draft such a survey. And then before it go, actually goes out, you know, let us review it, discuss it.
And basically the survey would involve, it would be surveying visitors to see how noise impacts their stay while they're in Moab, their, right, their vacation, whatever.
Yeah, well, like, would you come to Moab again?
Yeah.
Because it was.
No, I think that's, I think that's a great survey. I, I sat at the front desk of a busy shop in town for many years and it definitely got feedback from people that, as town got noisier, that they were less likely to return to Moab. It is, I mean, it absolutely affects.
Yeah, so, so I think we all hear that anecdotally, I, I think being able to put some actual numbers to it would.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and, uh, how was the previous survey sort of deployed and how would this be as well?
The previous survey was a little bit on you, the previous survey was not of actual Moab visitors, but of potential future Moab visitors. So it, it kind of screened, it was a web-based survey and they screened people who have visited national parks in the past five years, therefore might come to visit Arches or something like that. So that's what the previous survey was. I, I think it might make sense in this survey, I'd be, I'd be interested to know what the, you know, the experts think. But, you know, we could try to poll people who actually have visited Moab. But we could also look at likely future visitor, like, I don't know to what extent, you know, Moab's developing a reputation even amongst people who haven't been here. But if it does have such a reputation, we'd like to understand what it is.
I think questions asking, uh, the, the people surveyed, how often they've been to Moab in the past or when they were in Moab in the past or something like that. If there's noticeable change to them.
Yeah, but again, I, I, I think there, there are people who put together surveys like this for a living and then so I guess I'd want,
Yeah.
Look at what they proposed first and then if we need to make some tweaks, we could do that.
All right, so, any, any other comments on it?
I was just gonna chime in if that's okay.
Absolutely, yeah.
Um, so I think besides Love and, and, um, you know, I think they, they are really good at getting that, you know, level of statistical significance and reaching a market wide enough that's kind of representative of people who would typically visit Moab. I think that was kind of their approach. I think the other potential avenue with this is that we are partnering with USU Moab's, Dr. Wayne Freeman, um, who has experience, um, kind of with how gateway communities are dealing with new types of visitation impacts and has worked with a community in West Yellowstone that developed snowmobiling, for example. And the, the pros and cons economically and community wise there. And we are working with them to do kind of a suite of analyses on timed entry, Utah Raptor State Park, those types of impacts from super local to regional. And I would wonder if thinking about this, um, through his lens of like making it very local and trying to target very much local impacts, um, rather than having that statistical significant zoomed out survey approach wouldn't be, um, at least the other option to pursue.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I think that pursuing something with USU also makes sense, maybe. Anyway, I, I'd be interested to discuss, to discuss it with you, August, you know, in, in more detail. And you could also float some ideas by, by the commission informally.
Yeah, for sure. I, I would say, uh, Kevin, I'd be happy to have a setup of meeting with Wayne probably, um, and just see if that, if they have time capacity or, um, you know, if we could get extra funding their way, if this would be something they'd be interested in. And or Love, but yeah, let's set up follow-up meetings for sure on this.
Anybody have anything to add? All right, um, it's like it for the discussion. Uh, discussion item T, calendar items and special events, Quinn Hall, Associate Commission Administrator.
Calendar time.
Yeah, all right.
Mother's Day Memorial Day coming up in May. Uh, we've got a few special events, the gravel bike event, uh, billing man is not permitted, but it's pending. We've got the Grand Fondo on the sixth and seventh and the High Water Music Festival. And that's it right now.
Was the Fondo two days this year?
That's a good question. Is it usually one day?
Yeah, usually just.
You're right, so then maybe one.
Saturday usually, oh, gotcha, right, okay. I will not be participating in the Fondo this year for the first time in ten years, I think.
I think you can still.
I'm, I'm out, man. All right, thanks, Quinn. We have one more item, uh.
Actually, before we move on, just something that suddenly started distracting me, I think, um, your name is misspelled on your.
We figured that out, yeah. Quinn, Quinn's gonna buy me an S before the next meeting.
We do have a, the correct name has been ordered.
Thanks, Kevin. We are up to our public hearing. Item U, uh, public hearing on a request to rezone real property located at seventy-five West Old Highway six and fifty in Thompson Springs, uh, from range and grazing to general business. And that is parcel number zero seven dash, uh, zero zero twenty-one dash zero one zero five, while preserving the existing, uh, OAO RV campground and, uh, Elisa, planning and zoning, thanks.
Okay, this application is brought forward by John Ridley Corkery and Bridget Anne Adams, owners of ten point ninety-nine acres of property in Thompson Springs. The request is to rezone the property from ranging grazing to general business, which would allow for an array of mixed commercial uses at the property. The future proposed land uses include the addition of five employee living quarters, small neighborhood retail, personal services, and artist creator space and indoor venue space and a small restaurant area. This rezone would not affect the overnight accommodations overlay zoning that currently exists on the northwest portion of the property, which I mistakenly described as the northeast in my staff report. So that's a correction, that's the overlay, OAO, um, district zoning in Thompson Springs there. So that would not be affected. Subject parcel is located adjacent to the main historic business intersection in the town of Thompson Springs and was historically used for commercial purposes, including the historic Desert Moon Hotel, RV Park and the old Cactus Cabaret, a small, as well as a small grocery. The old historic Silver, Silver Grill Cafe is one building over from the Desert Moon and across that intersection is the old Thompson Motel. The property currently consists of an existing bed and breakfast with five rooms for overnight use as well as a campground RV park consisting of ten RV sites. The owner's residence is also onsite. Um, as far as site improvements, the rezone, this rezone request requires no current site improvements, but later site improvements in connection to proposed additions of various mixed commercial uses on the property and updates to existing structures will be in accordance with Grand County Land Use Code as well as Grand County Construction Standards and the International Building Code. For general plan consistency, the proposed rezone request to general business is consistent with the general plan future land use designations in the twenty-twelve general plan. The range resource and recreation future land use designation calls for low density residential as well as recreation, resort development, agriculture and extraction of natural resources. And the rural center future land use designation calls for neighborhood scale, retail, small businesses, local commercial, local tourism and onsite renewable energy, um, as well as residential neighborhoods. It should also be noted that the Thompson Springs area is anticipated to be evaluated for a broad rezone based on the outcome of the land use analysis that is scheduled to be completed in the fall of twenty twenty-two. Or I should say maybe early, early summer, sorry, late summer twenty twenty-two, I think that's still kind of tentative. As a result, this area of Thompson Springs will likely be envisioned to be a commercial hub for the community and prompt rezoning to general business or similar at that time. While not a requirement of a rezone application, the planning and zoning department is requesting a water analysis for property owners applying for rezones in Thompson Springs due to the current moratorium on new water connections with the Thompson Special Service District. The submitted analysis and TSSD will serve letter demonstrates the property owners have an existing water account with AERUs, which supports current and future proposed uses based on state regulation guidelines for peak water usage for each existing and proposed use in phase one of the development. Increase in water usage as a result of future development at the subject property has been discussed with the applicant and will be evaluated in full detail against the land use code and international business code and site plan review, at-site plan review and permit review, building permit review. Furthermore, the TSSD has the capacity to monitor water usage and restrict account owners from using more water than their allotted ERUs. So just a couple of issues of consideration to note. It may have been the case that the existing zone of ranging grazing was designated in error as historically and presently the land use is geared more towards commercial use. There also does appear to be a change of character, or it might be more accurate to say that there has been a continuation of the commercial character of the area and that the current zoning doesn't accurately portray that character. In terms of the need for the proposed use, use in the area, currently there are minimal retail businesses in the Thompson Springs community. And with the relatively far distance from Moab services and amenities, it could benefit the community to have more options for local retail and gathering spaces. Potential benefits derived by the community or area by granting the proposed rezoning may include revitalization as the rezone will allow renovation of rundown structures and promote general cleanup of the area. The subject parcel is surrounded by ranging grazing, but also adjacent to light industrial and across the street from highway commercial, therefore staff does not believe this change constitutes spot zoning. In the planning commission recommendation, in a public hearing on February fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, the Van County Plan Commission considered evidence and testimony presented with respect to the subject application and unanimously approved a motion to send a favorable recommendation to the Van County Commission, stating that the existing zoning appears to be in error and that sufficient measures are in place to ensure the commercial use does not exceed existing water rates. And that's all I have for my staff report. Do you have any questions?
Questions for Lisa?
No, I get, this is probably an ignorant question, but I'm okay with that. To me, a will serve letter usually just accompanies like a new development. So why was that a component? Does that make sense to just?
That was only because, and it's not a requirement of our, of our, of a rezone in our code.
Okay.
But it was staff kind of going over and beyond because of the water moratorium.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
Yep, okay, I appreciate that.
And they will have to have that again as they go for a site plan review. Have to talk out will serve.
Sarah?
You, you mentioned that the silver, there's two other commercial ventures there on that corner of that intersection, but there's still zoned range and grazing.
There, yeah, those are old historic uses, they're not current, they're just, they're rundown vacant buildings. But I thought it, it was interesting to mention those because they, at one time, they were up and running and vibrant.
Yeah, there's, yeah, the zoning out there is a mess.
Yeah, um, so my question relates to the staff recommendation on this is neutral. Is there, um, a reason that it's not just supportive?
Um, no, the, on rezones, staff does not provide a recommendation one way or the other. We just kind of, we provide the facts and, um, don't have a, a recommendation beyond, you know, just providing the facts.
Okay, and I think I saw that, uh, Mr. Corkery was on earlier.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should, uh, hear from the owner.
Hey, guys, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, well, uh, uh, thanks so much for, for considering this rezone. Bridget and I are excited with the potential to add more businesses to the community of Thompson Springs, which is why we wanted to go for this rezone. Like Elisa said, we went through an extensive water usage. We looked at our water usage and, and basically we are in our phase one development plans. We are going to stay within the water use that we, that we currently have allotted for the property that came with, with it when we bought it. And there was one thing Elisa didn't say is our neighbor is also, the neighbor that owns the Silver Sage Cafe is also looking to go, uh, general business as well. So that would put us like, she and us would both be general business if we're able, you know, if, if she's able to go that route as well, which would make sense. I mean, we're right on the main intersection of Thompson. And, um, I mean, generally we're looking to revitalize Thompson and make it a true rural hub as, you know, per the Grand County Land Use Code. And, uh, this would be a huge help for us in being able to make that happen, uh, as, so that we can, you know, open these smaller businesses that, uh, Elisa was describing and be able to provide more for the Thompson Springs community and the visitors that are coming to Thompson Springs and, uh, create more jobs, more opportunity, uh, for people who want to come and live in Thompson Springs. And I think that'll be a big help, you know, if and when we're able to get more water. Us having these businesses up and running is going to be a great benefit to the growth of Thompson Springs in general. And so, um, yeah, I, I, we're just hopeful that, that it can work out. But, um, does anybody have any questions for me personally?
Questions for John?
John, I have a question. I, uh, because in your application too, you talk about kind of if and when we're able to get more water and with the water deficit, what is your idea of what that looks like and how there might be more water in the future?
Um, well, currently the, the, we have, the TSSD has applied for, um, a permit to, to develop another spring up Thompson Canyon and, uh, from the BLM. And we are just waiting to hear back from that permit from the BLM, so, um, and i- if that's, uh, if the BLM gives us that permit, then we'll be able to develop that spring, uh, which is current, which is right on the current TSSD water line. So it won't take that much to, to put it in. And it was actually the old spring that the TSSD used to use. And from all accounts and measures that we've heard and seen, um, that spring actually produces more water than the current spring. But obviously we won't know until we're able to actually develop it. So, um, there's that, and then there's also the, the Umpra, uh, pipeline that, um, we are also waiting to hear back from Umpra on setting up another meeting on that. And then the third option would be for the TSSD to drill some wells up the canyon. The spring seems like the lowest hanging fruit, so that's. The spring seems like the lowest hanging fruit. So that's what the TSSD is going for right now. And we're just, we should be hearing back from the BLM here in three to six months. So, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah. Thanks, John. I, I'm not sure you were aware, Josie, but John, uh, is also the chair. Yeah, got it. Okay. Chair of the TSSD. Any other? Any other question? I had a question for Elisa. Um, I, I know, um, I'm, you know, back in twenty nineteen when we passed overnight accommodation overlay, Thompson was treated a little bit differently than the rest of the county. And I'm just trying to remember how exactly that went and how this change, you know, this change to general business might interact with new overnight accommodations. It sounds like from the application, they're, they're not asking for additional.
No, there is no, um, ask for additional overnight accommodations. So it wouldn't be increasing or expanding their OA use already. But, um, I think what I recall is that there was something about allowing the OAO hotel possibility out there. I can't remember exactly.
I think what they did was, uh, included Thompson Springs in an overlay so that they could apply.
Okay.
Yeah. Maybe could apply for a new OAO hotel district. Cause I don't think that's allowed.
They'd have to go through the same.
Right. They'd have to go through a whole OA.
Anyway, but it's, it's the opinion of the planning department that this, this is not giving the green light to additional ways. And it's, it sounds like people are satisfied that this isn't going to create, you know, excessive demand for water. It's gonna fit within the existing situation up there.
Right.
All right. Um, I will, any, any other, any other questions for John or Elisa? I will, uh, open up this, uh, public hearing until, uh, Wednesday, April twenty-seventh at five PM for comment. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to comment right now? Seeing none, um, we will open the public hearing and, uh, hope to hear from somebody. Thank you, Elisa.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Would anybody like to call a closed session?
I'll make a motion to go into closed session to talk about personnel competency and character. I can't remember the exact.
That's close. We got it. Thank you, Mary. Uh, motion by Commissioner McGann. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Dean, all in favor of the motion to go into closed session, uh, raise your hand.
Aye.